Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 16th Meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Council members Devine.
Here.
Friedman, Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Sonian.
Here. Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Devine.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered by Reverend Rich Carner of the First United Methodist Church.
Let us together pray. In this season as the darkness increases, we remember, O God, that you are the Creator of light. Stir up in us a yearning for this light, knowing that it will be offered and received in a variety of manifestations. When the darkness of oppression and violence threatens to overwhelm, show us the way to the light of justice. When the darkness of poverty endangers all but most particularly the children, call us to the light of compassion and equity. When our lives are darkened by insecurity and despair, help us build up safety and hope. When we are diminished by isolation and division, urge us to develop an authentic community where we know ourselves to be part of the human family. May we continue to seek the light of love and grace, and having encountered and embraced this gift, may we be prepared to share it with others, so that this blessing would flow throughout the world as sure sign of your reconciling mercy and your healing peace. We pray this, confident in the presence of the Holy. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend Carner. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for the December 16, 2014, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, December 11, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What is next, Mr. Clerk?
Next is presentation and appointments at 3A is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, December 23, 2014. We have no meetings for that day. The council and other agency bodies will be dark.
What is next?
And it will be dark for the two Tuesdays following that as well.
Very well, thank you. What is next?
Next is consent items, including minutes for the following our routine and may be acted upon one by one motion. Any member of council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such motion, such request before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to ask that you allow us to pull item E and continue that over to January 13. Representatives of the DGA could not be here tonight to answer your questions.
Very well, thank you.
Move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sonian.
Yes. Next item?
Next item on the agenda is city council and staff comments.
Ms. Devine?
Yeah, oh, thank you. I just have one comment, and that was concerning the Los Angeles Premier Orchestra and the Christmas musical Spectacular. And if you missed it, it was an absolutely fantastic evening. I want to congratulate everyone that was concerned with the production, especially, of course, conductor Norman Mamie. It included an evening of music and comedy and dance and adults and children, and it was just fantastic, and what a way to kick off the season. So congratulations to all of them, and the Alex Theater was almost packed, so it was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Devine. I think I'd like to say a few things. Today, I believe, is the first day of Hanukkah, so happy Hanukkah to all of our Jewish friends and residents. Last week on Monday, I don't think we, any of us mentioned it during the Tuesday meeting, but last Monday, we, I along with Councilmember Najarian and Councilmember Weaver, were hosted at the Saint Leon Cathedral of the Armenian, of the diocese of the Armenian Apostolic Church by Archbishop Hovnan Dar Darion. Also present were quite a few of our executive staff, including our fire chief, police chief, assistant city manager Yasmin Beers, Matt Doyle, the Lands of Fame. Anyway, it was a great get-together, didn't necessarily have anything to do with the holidays, but just get to know each other or get to see each other kind of a thing. So thank you to the Archbishop for his hospitality. And of course, our Artik Sakhin, our city clerk, was also there. So last week, we had some rainstorms, during which, I believe, our city came out with the minimum amount of pain and suffering due to our public works. And I would like to invite Rubik Galanian and Steve Zern to give a somewhat of a report of what happened and what the city did to make sure that all the problems were remedied in a timely manner.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, we had rain, so on the one hand, at least, certainly from a water and power perspective, and for all residents of California, yes, we were glad it rained and rained a lot. But as the keepers of the main infrastructure, Mr. Galanian and I also have to keep a wary eye out for what can happen with that rain when it comes and when it's accompanied by winds. Relatively unscathed, as you said, Mr. Mayor, we did very, very well from water and power perspective. We had a handful of smattering of outages, a lot of that due to wind, wind-driven palm fronds and some tree branches that came down. We got those restored rather quickly in almost every case. We had a number of secondary services. These are the services from the pole to the house that had some issues. We got the residents taken care of with that. And then about mid-Friday afternoon, we had what was our real challenge, and that's where we had a tree go down into 1,600 block of Valley View. And it crossed the street. It's a rather large tree, as you can see, went across the street and caught the electrical lines on the other side, ended up snapping the heads off of two poles and severely damaging another. And that pole there happens to have a transformer on it. It also ruptured the water line at the residence, as you can see from this picture, and as the water line was connected to another meter further up the street, ruptured that as well. So we had, in quick order, by 2:00, which is the time I got there, we had water and power electrical crews, water and power water crews, and Public Works tree maintenance crews working hand in hand and working feverishly on this thing. And I have to tell you, and I certainly have passed this on to Mr. Ochoa and Mr. Galanian, they worked seamlessly together. There was no territorialism, there was none of that. It was just boom, let's get this thing done, and they worked very, very well together. Once the tree got cleared partially, we were able to get the lines back up. So while originally we had almost 2,000 customers out on this outage, we got it down quickly by rerouting power to about 100. As I said, it was 2:00 when we started in earnest. Probably by before 6:00 that night, we had all but about 10 that were out, and by 6:30 the next morning, those 10 were back in. That means that those crews never went home. They worked all night long, both Public Works and Water and Power. They are required, in some cases, to take mandatory breaks. They wouldn't go home. They slept in their trucks at the end of the street and got the work done. It was their intent to get the customers back up and running. So I'm very proud of them, and of course, always very proud of Public Works as well, even though I'm not the director, but certainly I'm very vested in that department, and they worked great together, support services and everything. And it was just, you know, something you don't want to see happen, but something that is not bad considering the amount of rain, and our folks got on it and took care of it right away. So I think it showed that the dedication to taking care of our citizens and hopefully the people, at least on Valley View, saw how hard our staff works to keep them in the services and at the level they deserve. And with that, I'll let Mr. Galanian.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as Mr. Zern mentioned, this was an extremely well-coordinated effort between Public Works and GWP. Mr. Zern already went over the events that happened at Valley View, but in Public Works, we had our yard attendant working double shifts just to ensure that if there were any calls coming from the residents, we could dispatch necessary crews to help them out. Our forestry crews and street and field crews were on call, and they were waiting to be called out. Friday morning, we didn't get any calls Thursday night, but Friday morning, we received several calls, primarily in the Chevy Chase Drive area after the station fire location. We were out there starting Friday morning, early in the morning, 6:30, started cleaning up some of the mud flows from the backyards that had flown into the driveways of the residents. We cleared up all the driveways, and we started working on the street right away. Towards the later in the afternoon, everything was cleared up except for a very thin layer of mud, but it was accessible on Solway. We cleaned that up this morning. Everything was finished. And we still are working with property owners, primarily the Self-Realization Church on Chevy Chase Drive, that have moved the debris out onto their front of their property that we will take care of, hopefully by the end of the week. That said, all of our staff members from clerical staff who are taking the phone calls from dispatchers and all the crews did a phenomenal job, and we're very proud of them. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm very grateful. The power went out in Glendale's Canyon, too, and less than two hours was back up again. Couldn't expect that in the city of L.A., but so thank you, Glendale.
Thank you. I think we can, with confidence, thank you on behalf of our residents. They're very happy with how quick the reaction was and how productive the reaction was. So thank you very much. Next, we, do we have a video? The, okay. Can we run that really quickly?
Yes, sir.
And yeah, I'd like to invite the chief at some point.
Well, every kid growing up wants to be a firefighter, and so did I.
I'm definitely proud of Ara. I know it's not an easy job to do, but I know he's good at it, and it makes me happy to know that he helps out the community members on a daily basis.
See, I grew up in the city of Glendale, so it's kind of nice to drive around the city and know that I know pretty much every inch.
The best part about Ara living and working in the city is that we can visit him whenever we would like, and my son loves his trips to the fire station.
My parents didn't know anyone that was a firefighter, so this was all a new experience for them. You know, what mom wants to have their kid run into a burning building. And my dad was a little upset at first when I told him that I want to pursue this career because I was going to leave the family business to come and start a new career for myself. The day of my graduation, I've never seen my dad so proud and so happy, and I remember, you know, him telling me, hey, I'm proud of you. I'm happy that you chose this career, especially now, you know, the fact that I've been staying in shape. I'm happy I get to, you know, raise my family the days that I'm off, you know, spending 24 hours with them rather than go to work early in the morning and then coming back late at night, dead tired, not wanting to hang out with them. He sees what a great profession this is, and he loves it.
As his wife, I get worried with the line of work that he's in, but knowing that he goes through a lot of training and seeing how much he enjoys what he does on a daily basis, and seeing that we spend a lot of time together as a family, I can't see him doing anything else.
You know, there's a saying, by yourself, you can do so much, but as a group, you can do so much more, and that's exactly how I feel here. I'm Ara Hunanian, and this is my Glendale.
Great video. So chief, this is part of our effort to recruit more firefighters, or what are we doing? It's a great video.
It is a great video, and Ara is a great guy, a great family, a great firefighter for our organization. We're really proud of him. This is an effort to recruit, and there's a couple of more videos coming behind him. But you know, Ara's the story we want to tell because Ara started off in our programs here in the Glendale Fire Department. First is one of our fire cadets, and that's that entry-level program that really lays the groundwork for building your skill set. And then he became one of our ambulance operators, and he got to learn the ins and outs of the organization and transitioned as a recruit firefighter in our academy, a probationary firefighter, and now he's one of our fire engineers, and you'll see him driving around the community in one of our fire engines, Station 22. So we're really proud of Ara. And just to let the community know, those programs will be opening up after the first of the year, and that's where we can really start to shape young people. If this is the career for you, we can start to shape you and show you what it's all about. So you should look for our Fire Cadet Program bulletin opening after the first of the year and our ambulance operator program. And here's what our goal is. Our goal is simple, is to get some young people in our program, because when we start to recruit for the firefighter position at the tail end of 2015 or early 2016, you'll have a year under your belt in these programs, and the likelihood of you being successful is greater. So if you know any young people out there, please have them call our headquarters fire station at fire 484814.
Right, chief, I want to join your comments. Our department is a great department. We have very professional firefighters. We have the best equipment. We have the best people with experience. We are not simply local. Often, our firefighters are called in on, what do you call, emergency duty.
Yeah, strike team deployment, individual resource deployment, and you know, our firefighters have been all the way on the East Coast to Superstorm Sandy, to the big fires when they were burning in Texas and Oklahoma. Back in August, they were all the way up at the state line on the California-Oregon border, helping battle those fires. It's really exciting, just like Ara said, and we live in and experience it. And you know, we want some more great, young, local people in our organization.
Right, and it's a very prestigious position, it's a very prestigious profession. I also encourage all young people to join in. We do have a woeful inadequacy of females, Armenian-speaking and Korean-speaking individuals in the department, and I think this is one way to reach out to those kinds of groups and encourage them to, you know, follow, you know, one way to do it is to follow these footsteps, which the chief just outlined. Start locally in the city at the bottom, and you sort of, you make it, you know, a year later, you're a much better candidate for an actual position with the department, right, chief?
Absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Devine?
I just, I'm glad you mentioned women, Mayor Sonian, because I was going to say that I hope the next PSA that you make will be of a woman firefighter.
That'd be great.
We will put that one on the list. We have a couple of more ahead, but it will be on the list.
Okay, thank you. Great, great job.
I don't want to put a damper in it, but chief, on the average, how many apply when you have, when you're recruiting? How many thousand?
We had just over 3,000 applied.
3,000 applied, and you had to whittle that down. The background searches, the, so much in your history goes into it that, what, 2,500 or less are eliminated?
Well, yes, but it's not the number who apply, it's the number who are ready. That's a big number who apply.
That's what I'm getting at, that, you know, just anybody just can't go down, anybody can go down and apply, but you better be qualified when you apply. It's a great profession, but we only take the best.
A lot is made of the numbers that apply, but as the chief indicates and as you're intimating, sir, really, that number gets whittled down very, very quickly simply because folks aren't ready to take that step. This is quite a career, and when you think of the, literally, the life and death choices that are being made on any given shift, we can't afford mediocrity. We actually are recruiting the very best and brightest. I think that's why, as the chief indicates and as the mayor is stating, we want folks to come in at that grassroots level, learn the business from us our way, and boy, will they be able to be successful in their community.
Yeah, that's a good message to get out. Same applies for the police department.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I would be remiss if we didn't give a shout-out to the folks at GTV6, Tom Lorenz, not only for putting the PSA together, but also being able to push it out on our social media apparatus to make sure we're getting maximum exposure from all of those young Glendale residents, men and women, who are aspiring to a career in the fire service.
Absolutely. Okay. That's all I had. Okay?
What's next, Mr. Clerk? Next, just before we move on to the next item, also wanted to announce that earlier this week, Councilmember Devine and I attended the opening of a passport center, a regional passport center at the postal, post office just down the street, our central post office. It'll serve not just Glendale, but the entire region to anyone who's traveling, needs to renew their passport, has lost their passport, is looking to replace it. And there were representatives there from the passport agency, various federal agencies, and it was very important because, first of all, that's a gorgeous building. Anyone who's lived in Glendale knows that. It's one of the most beautiful buildings that we have, and it was preserved in large part due to the efforts of this council and the community, and one of the things that it will be now providing is a service to the entire region.
Is this different from the passport window that they had before?
It is a much larger passport window. It is an actual passport room, a very large room.
Oh, wow.
Where people can handle all of their passport needs, and it'll hopefully serve, as I said, not just Glendale, but the area around it, and was great to run into Santa Claus at the post office, who was apparently getting his passport taken care of as well. One of our postal workers was completely decked out for the holidays, and it's a very festive atmosphere for anyone who's going to that post office right now.
Yes, Ms. Devine?
And I just want to add to Mr. Sakhin's remarks, the fact that it's almost a mini museum now. The Ramella, the gal that was in charge of designing the space, has collected photographs and articles of Glendale's history in the postal service business, and it's quite interesting, and you can just walk in and see it. And I predicted that one day it's going to be like the DMV, because they have like five agents giving out passports and seating and taking numbers, and it's quite, quite a passport department now. It's fantastic, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Next item is community event announcements, three minutes.
And I only have one card, just reminding everyone, this is the time. But Ruslan Birukov.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, the staff, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah. My name is Ruslan Birukov, and I am the executive director and the founder of Glendale Philharmonic Orchestra, and I'm here to invite you to our holiday concert and birthday party. Our orchestra is turning five years of age, and here's a little... So the video is pretty much self-explanatory. The concert is on January 10 at 7:00 p.m., Saturday, First Baptist Church of Glendale, our regular venue. Red carpet will start at 6:00 p.m., so more than welcome to join us. Free cake from Billis Deli. And what I specifically wanted to bring to your attention, we are giving $1 tickets to students. So if you know of any schools or students that would like to take advantage of this offer, we quote up to 200 tickets for each of our concerts of $1 each for our students, and I can tell that Crescent Valley High School already booked 30 tickets for their kids. I know that Glendale High School also with Amy Rangel going to take some, but we still have quite a bit available for the students particularly. Now, once again, the conductor for this concert will be Frank Fetter. I will be the soloist, and Rich Caparella, the announcer from KUSC, will be the master of ceremonies. So the program will include Mozart Symphony Number One, Haydn Cello Concerto in C major, Copland Appalachian Spring, Summer Pastoral by Onager, and The Entertainer by Joplin. We might have a surprising appearance of one of the celebrity comedians, I can tell you. We might, I don't know, we'll see. So it almost feels right now like déjà vu, to be honest. Mr. Najarian, if you remember my very first appearance here five years ago, when I came up here and I said, my name is Ruslan Birukov, my English isn't good enough, I hope you will understand me, and we are announcing appearance of Glendale Philharmonic, and we are not going to ask for money. And so I'm happy that we survived these five years. We are 501(c)(3) now, tax exempt, and we incorporated as Positive Motion's Foundation. Our foundation has few other projects now. It's L.A. cello quartet, and another project is music for children fighting cancer. If anyone who hears me now would like to get involved with us, more than welcome, join our board. Okay, the time is over. Particularly the project for the cancer sick children. That's our, sort of one of our top projects that we are trying to develop. So please let me know if you'd like tickets, and I hope to see you on the concert.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Birukov.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That's the only speaking card that I have. What is next, Mr. Clerk?
Under adoption of ordinances, 7A is ordinance adopting interim procedure addressing expiration violation, discontinuance, and revocation of approvals of reasonable accommodation granted pursuant to the Glendale Municipal Code. This was introduced on December 9, 2014, by Councilmember Friedman.
You're welcome. Introduce 7A. I'll move 7A unless you have a card.
Second. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sonian.
Yes. Next item?
7B is ordinance approving sale of city-owned portion of Laurel Street. This was introduced December 9, 2014, by Councilmember Najarian.
I'll move 7B.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Sonian.
Yes. Next item?
Under action items, 8A is city manager regarding Armenian genocide centennial from the Western U.S. to produce the 2015 Armenian genocide commemorative events. At 8A1 is resolution authorizing committee to produce the events.
Yes, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. This coming year, 2015, as you very well know, marks the somber and solemn centennial of the Armenian genocide. We are looking at this point to allow for the AGCC, the Armenian Genocide Commemorate Centennial Committee, Western U.S., to advance the programs that you will see this spring. They have requested this of the city. We are, as you will see in the staff report, offering to support them with up to $10,000, which is almost triple what we would normally spend by way of just out-of-pocket costs and in-kind services, such that we believe, as you believe, that the centennial does need to be marked with something very special, very unique, for the benefit of the whole community. But what you have before you at this time is a resolution that allows the AGCC Western USA to lead this effort, and the city to become a supporting actor in this effort, as opposed to the city and the city committee that would lead and spearhead the effort. Mr. Dan Bell, our community relations manager, is here. If you have any questions, I will tell you that the, as my understanding is that the scheduled events has yet to materialize. This is really the first step that allows the AGCC to step into that pole position so that they are leading the effort. But if you have any questions about how the committee has functioned in the past, certainly Mr. Bell can answer those or any of our interactions with the AGCC folks.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move 8A.
Okay, I have a quick question. So does the city have representation on the committee?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. So in the staff report, it states there, we want to make sure that we will be at the table. Traditionally, for a little background, the mayor has been on this committee, and we'll choose another council member to be on there. So we will have two council representatives on this. So we will have two council representatives on this committee, as well as myself. And it also states, to be clear, that some of the current group that for the last 13 years has planned the events, if we'd like to bring them along, we have that discretion to do that as well.
Very well. Any other questions?
And your name for the record, sir?
Dan Bell.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. I know you've been involved in the last... How long have you been with the city? Two years?
Two years, next month, but I've planned the last two, yes.
Two years. You've been involved with the last two, and it's rather bittersweet that the city is not handling this themselves, however, with the understanding that there is a umbrella organization, the Centennial Committee, that is trying to coordinate many events throughout the Southern California region. And I have received several calls from frantic planning members from previous years who didn't want to be left out, who did want to contribute to the planning of this year's event.
Right.
So we'll put those names forward, and I guess the mayor's discretion will-
Absolutely.
...will include those that are appropriate.
Sometimes folks aren't always at the table, but they're involved. So we'll make sure those folks are there.
Certainly, yes. So thank you. We have a motion pending. Do we have a second?
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman. Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sananian.
Yes, thank you. Next item, please.
8B is city attorney regarding discussion of potential ballot measures at the request of the Glendale Unified School District, amending city charter relating to districting. B1 is resolution authorizing placing on the ballot the question of amending charter relating to the elections of the Board of Education. B2 is a resolution calling for arguments for and against the ballot measures.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Members of council, this item is related to the Glendale Unified School District's proposal to amend the city charter as it relates to their elections. As with the city council, the GUSD Board of Education is also elected at-large. They have received a similar letter as the one that the city received. And what they have... At last week's meeting of the board, they adopted a resolution requesting that the council adopt a resolution that's before you, which would be a ballot measure to amend the city charter, which... To eliminate the at-large requirement for the board members, and then would allow the Board of Education to adopt by resolution a district plan or trustee area plan in arrangement with the California Education Code. So that's the item before you. So there's two items. One is to place that ballot measure on the ballot to amend the charter, and the other resolution would be a resolution calling for arguments for and against the ballot measure.
Any questions? Does anyone like to move?
I'll move 8B, 1 and 2.
Second. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have a speaker on this issue. Mr. Mohill, haven't forgotten you. Mike Mohill. Sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor Sananian. May I pardon?
How much time do you have?
Oh, an hour. No, 3 is fine.
3 minutes, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Sananian, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I'm very happy to see that the Glendale Unified School District has gone forward with the council districting. The issue really is how many districts we're going to talk about. And I hope the school district joins the city of Glendale with seven council districts. Seven districts will mean that each council person-to-be, or in this case, someone from the board, school board, would have like 20... They would represent about 28,000 people in their district. True democracy. It's impossible to say how many Armenians, how many Filipinos, how many Chicanos, whatever. But within a district of seven eliminates this thing called ethnic voting, which I'm totally against, and have it all based on economic and social needs. But again, because of the lawsuit, I'm happy it's going forward, and I hope the city council also adopts council district into the charter, voter ballot, let the people vote on it, because they know best. Every time they vote, they know best. And again, I hope the school district goes ahead and follows the Glendale City Council with seven districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. I think we have a motion and a second. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine.
Yes.
Friedman. Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Sananian.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item, at 8C is city attorney. This is continued from December 9th, 2014, regarding discussion of potential ballot measures, amending city charter relating to districting. C1 is a resolution of the council authorizing placing on the ballot the question of amending the charter to remove reference to at-large elections and adopting an ordinance that requires council either, one, to adopt a district plan, or two, to call for a special election to adopt a district plan in sufficient time to have districts in place for 2017 general municipal election, option A. Two is a resolution of the council authorizing placing on the ballot the question of amending charter to remove reference to at-large election, adopting an ordinance that requires council to adopt a district plan in sufficient time to have districts in place for 2017 general municipal election, option B. Three is a resolution of the council authorizing placing on the ballot the question of amending charter to remove reference to at-large election, adopting an ordinance that requires council call for a special election to adopt the district plan in sufficient time to have districts in place for 2017 general municipal election, option C. Four is a resolution calling for arguments for and against the ballot measures.
Thank you, Mr. Kasakian. Do we have additional meaning?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so we have... I'll go through the materials that we've handed out, and there are copies in the back. The three options that are before you that were put on the agenda after having individual briefings with council and having more as a result of the questions that resulted from those discussions, we put together two additional options, which are not really additional, they're really hybrid of the three options that we've presented to you. So what we've handed out are what's option A1, which is just changing a little bit of the language, and I'll go through that in a second. Option D, which... And option E, which are the two hybrid options. And then we have given you a copy of the PowerPoint. So I'll go through those as we go through the presentation. So we did have that discussion last week, Mr. Mayor, members of council, regarding different options. And those three options are... That staff report is attached to your packet, and so we can also refer to that if there are either of those options the council wants. But given that the council gave us additional direction to bring back some additional options, we've given some thought to that, and first want to lay out sort of the framework of what the goals might be. And all of these options serve some... These goals to varying degrees, and so I'll go through them one by one. But obviously, the first point is to go through this process, if the council's going to put this on the ballot, is to have the voters decide whether to go to districts. So that's obviously the threshold question, and so that's presented as the charter amendment that are part of all of these options. The second goal, obviously, is to obtain as much public input as is feasible and as the council deems appropriate in creating these district plans. Another goal is obviously to be able to address and be able to react to any potential litigation that might result from Cook California Voting Rights Act challenges to the city's electoral system. Another goal, obviously, would be to provide some flexibility in the decision-making on district plans. And as you see, some of those... Some of these options meet that goal more so than the other options. Another goal that I heard from council... A policy goal that I heard from council last week is flexibility to make other changes as we go through this process. For example, being able to create an at-large mayor or to create more council seats, or do frankly, to do a hybrid of those two scenarios. And then another goal would be to have the districts in place by April 2017, which is after the April 2015 election, would be the next general municipal election, which the districts could apply. And then another goal, and it's not really a goal, it's a policy question, is whether to have the council or the voters ultimately approve the district plan that is prepared and approved by the council. So I'll go through each option one at a time, and I do beg your indulgence a little bit because I felt it was appropriate to kind of have as much detail in the presentation more so than we normally do, but just so that we can have the opportunity to walk everybody through what these options are. So option A is a plan would change the charter to remove the reference to that large system from the charter. And then it would also have a voter-adopted ordinance, which would require the transition plan, which would require the public input. And then by no later than August 1, 2016, the council would either have to adopt that plan by ordinance or call a special election to occur by November 8, 2016, and it could either be a special election or consolidate with a statewide election for the purposes of putting that measure on the ballot to actually adopt the plan. And again, the purpose there is that would give some flexibility, but would have a plan in place by April 2016... 17, excuse me. So the ballot... This is what the ballot question in the resolution... This is the actual wording in the resolution. And again, it talks about the April 2017 general municipal election having in place by then, having by-district elections instituted by the council. And then it could be either by adopting an ordinance for the plan or requiring that be submitted to the voters. Here is the charter, the proposed charter language. And this... Both the charter language and the ordinance language are both exhibits to each resolution. But again, this is just the charter language, and I'll get into it in a second. I'll get into the ordinance language, which actually talks about what the plan would be. So this is just removing the at-large system from the charter, and then would allow, on its own, and it might be a little... I want to make sure it's clear. It does allow the council by ordinance to establish the process, but it says, "Unless provided for by an ordinance adopted by the city's electorate," and that's where the second part of this comes in. And then it says that any matter not provided for by this charter or by city ordinance shall be governed by provisions of the general law, so that's general state law. And then it keeps the five members of the council in place unless the council adopts a... Unless, excuse me, unless the voters vote for a change in the number of council seats. This is the second part of option A, and this is the ordinance. And again, very straightforward, it just requires the council, by August 1 of 2016, to either adopt an ordinance, adopting the plan, or call a special election for the voters to approve that plan. And this ordinance, as part of this particular ballot measure, could only be amended or rescinded by a vote of the people. So some of the pros and cons of this option, vis-à-vis the discussion that you all had last week, was it allows for some flexibility in the transition planning while still having the districts in place by April 2017. In other words, if this measure passes in April 2015, then we would get right to work on the transition plan, get, you know, have draft plans prepared, have public input, and it's going to be totally up to the council at that point to decide how that process works. We can have some public input before the districts are drawn up, and then have the districts drawn up based on that input, and then have them brought back for council review. We could do it the other way around. And then the council can decide whether they want to appoint a committee of citizens to handle the initial map drawing, or if the council wants to have that done in another manner. If the council chooses to place it on the ballot, or this... I would say this is a con or a risk. So the one risk is if the council ultimately... If this measure is adopted, and the council ultimately puts the district plan on the ballot, and the voters vote that down, then you have... We're sort of in a limbo, and we do open ourselves up to challenges under CVRA. One of the benefits, obviously, is the council still has opportunity to approve the plan down the road. And then another option is even if this is adopted, the council with voter approval would still have the opportunity, as part of the district map process, to make other changes to the city's governance system, which we talked about last week, which could include potentially increasing the number of council seats or adding an at-large mayor to our structure.
Mr. Garcia. But if the voters will know, everything stays just the way it is today, or it's been for the last 100 years.
Correct. So if this... If any of these measures, whichever one is put on the ballot, are voted down by the electorate, then we're at status quo, and we have to see whether or not there are any challenges to our system or not. So we'll deal with that if we come to it. So that's option A. Option B is the same as option A, except that rather than having the option to go to... Once the plan is... Once the charter amendment is passed, and once we go through the process to create the maps and the council districts, then it sets a timeline by August 1, 2016, for the council to adopt that plan. So wouldn't... Council would not have... Under this option, the council would not be... Have that opportunity to put it on the ballot. And here's the ballot question. It's... So you see it's similar to the other one, but again, it requires adoption of an ordinance by the council without the option of going to... Back to the voters. Again, that's the charter language. This is the ordinance language, again, providing by August 1, 2016, an ordinance adopting a district plan. And that would have to occur so that the April 2017 elections could occur by districts. Pros and cons of this particular option are that it obviously allows for the greatest amount of public input. There's a certainty that with this option, that districts will be in place. If the voters approve this ballot measure with option B, there's a certainty that we will have districts by April 2017, because the measure requires it. So that's just from a risk avoidance and from a certainty perspective, that's the option that gives you that sort of level of certainty. And I would add, for council's benefit, we had the discussion last week about the city of Whittier and how their plan allowed them to avoid future litigation or the pending litigation. And option B is really the Whittier model. It required them to have districts by a date certain. Option C, again, requires that there's a charter amendment to review... To remove that large language from the charter. But this one, instead of... It's the flip of alternative B, or option B, in that it requires the council then to ultimately put that district plan back to the vote of the people. And again, it would have a timeline to have that all in place by August for the council to put it on the ballot so that the voters could weigh in it, no later... Weigh in on it no later than November of 2016, and then that plan would be in effect by April 2017. So that was the option, and this was a discussion. I think the mayor and other council members had an interest in looking at that particular option. So that's languages for your benefit. Here's the ballot question that will be on the ballot. And again, it ties in, a mandate that we have April 2017... Have this in place by April 2017, with the caveat, obviously, that if the voters don't ultimately pass the district plan, then we wouldn't have that in place. Here's the charter language. And it's some... The charter language itself is identical in each scenario. It's the ordinance which is different. Again, this is just requiring that it go to the voters, that the district plan go to the... Back to the voters. Again, so pros and cons, this provides the greatest level of public input and the greatest level of voter decision-making, because it requires a charter amendment in April 2015, and it requires the voters to approve the plan. It'll allow the council to make other changes to the number of seats and have an at-large mayor. One of the potential downsides is that the creation of districts by April 2017 is not guaranteed under this plan, because it does require that additional condition of subsequent voter approval. And then, you know, you're... Obviously, then you're looking at some risk or downside if the voters reject that plan. So this is option D, and this is, again, this is really a hybrid of option C. And it really... It, again, requires... It amends the charter. It requires the council to start the public hearing process, public input, seek public input, prepare a district plan, and then put it back to the voters. But it's... You see, it's a little bit more simple, just requiring the preparation of a district plan. Here's the charter language. And then here, it's very simple, the ordinance requires that there be a measure put on the ballot. The noticeable difference is that this option does not have a timetable by which the city will be considering going to districts. And I would just... I would submit that even if we were to do nothing today, not put anything on the ballot today, it's the same result operationally, legally, as this option. And so the... I'd point out to you that this is always something that the council could do at a future time as well. It doesn't assist in risk avoidance issues, but it's really the same result. The only difference being that it does amend the charter. But again, you don't have any certainty that it will be at districts at any time in the future. So again, these are some of the... They're the same pros and cons as C, again, except that it would be very difficult to argue that there's going to be any set timeframe which to do these- timeframe which to do these council districts. So I'll go to option, what I call option E. And essentially, we, the, I think that one of the questions that we're all struggling with is how do we allow a process to go forward, to go to districts, yet at the same time give us some flexibility to create the districts? And then how do we deal with the scenario where maybe the voters want to allow us to go forward and make, make changes to go to districts, but they're not yet, they don't yet know how those districts should look, what the process should be, how many seats there should be? And this really is taking measure A, or option A, and splitting it into two separate measures. So the first measure would amend the charter to remove the reference of an at-large, or the requirement of an at-large election from the charter, and require the council to adopt an alternate election by, method by ordinance. And then the second, the second would require the same process as we've had it, and then the council could either go to, go back to the voters or could adopt it by ordinance. Let me go back, the, back here. So the distinction between this and measure A is if, if the first measure of measure E passes, then at least the city has some flexibility to, to address any potential litigation issues, to at least start a districting process, and then, and then go back, and go back to the voters if the council decides that's what it wants to do. And if measure, so if the first part of measure E passes, but, or option E passes, but the second part does not, then you still have amended the charter, and you can go forward and start a process. If measure, if the second part passes, but the first part does not, it's null and void because you haven't amended the charter, so you don't legally have the authority to go to districts. And then if they both pass, or if they both fail, then nothing happens. And if they both pass, it's the same effect as option A. So that provides a little bit more flexibility. It, if the concern for council, maybe perhaps council members feel they want to go down the road of at least amending the charter to allow us to start the process, but don't really feel comfortable with any other part of the process, then the council members are free on their own to advocate for the first half of measure A, which we're calling measure E, and then the second half, F, sorry, measure F, and then measure G would be the second part, which would actually go to districts. It's, it's a little, I admit, it's a little complicated, but it was recommended by council just in, again, it's just, it gives you some flexibility if down the road, we want to go down this, we want to go down the road of districts, but yet haven't, haven't yet decided what the process should look like. That's pretty much it. Those are the measures. Again, so if measure F is not adopted, then measure G is void. So it, the couple, as, as I noted, it couples the two measures to allow flexibility to say, we want the charter amendment, but not necessarily the process that you've put in the code. And then the council will still have the opportunity to approve a council plan down the road. So these, essentially, these are, these are the summary of the five options that we've presented to you. I would note to you that the three options that were presented last week are, they're within the umbrella of what we've discussed, so the council's free to have a discussion on those as well. But measures A, B, and C would amend, yes, vote, would amend the city charter, and the voters would adopt an ordinance to prescribe election, district elections in a certain manner, and I'll get into those in a second. And then a no vote, me, is just a, we keep the status quo, and we keep at-large. With option D, is yes or no for, by district or elections? A yes vote means the voters amend the charter and voters adopt an ordinance. But again, there's no timing on that particular ordinance. And again, a no vote on that means we maintain that, the at-large status quo. Option E, I've already gone through it enough, but it splits those two measures. And then electorate, if the voters vote yes or no on that ordinance, districts would be in place by April 2017, or at least there's the potential that they'll be in place by April 2017. And again, all options require a significant amount of public input. By law, required to have at least three public hearings. But the council, if, if this measure is passed, and the charter is amended, and we have this ordinance on the books, at that point, within those limitations, the council would be free to establish a process that it seems, it deems to be appropriate for public input. So that's, those are the options that we have for you. The only thing I would, I would point out to you is, or that I'd recommend, again, I think if you're going to go down this road, from my view, from the legal perspective only, it makes sense to have a, a timing when that, that's going to occur for the next day. Because I, it's, from a court's perspective, I think it's, it's reasonable to assume that we could get a district plan in place before the voters by November 2016. The other options, which leave it open, the council can always just leave it open, and we could fight that fight another day. But I don't mean to dissuade you from, from D, or, because that, even then, I would still argue, hey, we started the process and we're going down that road. I just, you know, obviously, measures A, B, and C, or options A, B, and C provide a little bit more directness in that regard. So with that, I'll submit, any questions council members may have?
I'll, I'll ask you a question. After a few briefings and last week's discussion and this morning's discussion, I'm still, I'm still confused, and I can only imagine how confused our residents are. So I think D is something that I, I had requested. Can we go back to D?
Let's start with the ballot question. So this would amend the charter?
Right. This would remove the
At-large.
The at-large mandate.
Yeah. And then it would require that the, I think it requires, it requires the council to put the measure, the district plans back, back to the vote.
Right. So this is very much like C, except it, it does not impose the 2017
By date.
By date requirement.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all it is. That's all it is.
That's all I wanted to ask. We have some speaking cards. If my colleagues don't have questions, I'd like to hear from our residents.
Yes, yes. Okay, now. Compare that to E.
I wouldn't compare E, D, and E, I would compare E to A. E is, is option A, but just splitting it into two different measures. That way, the voters can decide, do they want to amend the charter? And then, and then do they want to also have a process where the council has to either adopt an ordinance by 2016 or put it back to the vote? It becomes, in option, in option A, it's two questions in one measure.
Right.
Yeah. Option E, it breaks it into two separate measures.
Got it.
It's the simplest way I can say it.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Okay, first speaker is Mike Mohill, followed by Arteen Manukian. Mr. Mohill, three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor St. Nannan, and council members in the viewing audience. Attorney Garcia, I want to thank you very much for a well-thought-out, well-presented presentation on council districts. I was in sales for nearly 30 years. We had an expression, if you want to sell a product, it's called KISS. Keep it simple, stupid, pardon my French. Sir, you made it so complex, I'd like to ask everybody in this audience, what did he say? Everybody had, hmm, it's complex. We need to keep this issue, as we would say in sales, KISS, keep it simple. Give the voters one or two choices, possibly three. Well, they'll go with four, and five, and six, and all these different, you're going to confuse them all, they're all going to say no. If that's what you want them to vote no, do it that way. Let's not water down the issue. We do know that if we do not go to districts, there's a potential lawsuit. And we also have a history of other cities and school districts, et cetera, that have lost those legal challenges. And it cost the school districts and the cities millions of dollars. We don't have that kind of money today. I'm suggesting let's not water down the issue of council districts. Keep it simple, yay, nay to the voters. You want five council districts? You want seven? If you go with seven council district, let's have a mayor elected at-large. So that the mayor, in this case, would appoint the city manager, the city attorney, the, well, in this case, we're elect, yeah, city attorney, and our director of finance, et cetera, et cetera. That makes it for a strong mayor, like they have in the city of Pasadena, that's just one right off the top. The point is, keep it simple. Let's not make it complex. Because you make it complex, the voters can say, huh. I mean, after all, I saw Mrs. Devine, all due respect, ma'am, you're going through the pages. What am I reading here, Mr. Weaver? And everybody else, they're like, what's going on here? And you, and you are all well-educated people. And the people in the audience are also. And yet, we're saying, Mr. Garcia, what did you say? And what are all our options? I got so many, I'm confused. So let's just keep it simple. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, yes.
Let's verify, we're only putting one of these options, or a hybrid
That's correct, sir.
One of these, not all of them.
And I think whichever one the council picks, then it becomes pretty self-explanatory at that point.
But I think the multiplicity of the options make it seem confusing, but at the end of the day, there's only going to be one option.
Correct.
And the reason there are multiple options is because we asked the city attorney to come back.
And we're the ones
So certainly, the city attorney is not to blame on this issue.
In actuality, we're trying to make it simple for all of you, and we're having to go through all of the gymnastics to get there, so.
Confusion's for us.
And make it, make it more under your control rather than our control as to what ends up happening. Because the change that may result, nothing may come of this, but the change that may result from this is so fundamental, it's going to overhaul our electoral system that we've had for nearly 100 years, or maybe over 100 years.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to ask one other thing. Mr. Mohill talked about Pasadena, the mayor runs the whole show over there.
The City of Pasadena has a directly-elected mayor with their seven council members, but it's still a council manager form of government.
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next speaker is Arteen Manukian, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening. Honorable mayor, council member, and staff, my name is Arteen Manukian, and I'm representing ANCA Glendale today. Even though we did state our position on this issue at the last council meeting, however, we feel that the whole matter shouldn't be rushed. On the contrary, the whole concept needs to be given ample time in order for the voter to fully understand and absorb it, so he or she can end up making a conscious and informed decision. We feel that the process should be in several phases. First, a simple measure outlining the city charter amendment from at-large to districting should be placed on the ballot next April. And if passed, then the next phase will begin by initiating a process where all interested parties and the residents will have ample time to familiarize themselves with the process, fully participate, and engage themselves in discussing the different options and methods, and subsequently arrive at a conscious and informed decision. We believe that no deadline should be imposed or fixed, and allow the process to take its due course. We firmly believe that at the end of the process, the end product, if I can call it that way, should be approved by the voters. Thank you.
Margaret Hammond. Thank you, Mr. Manukian. Margaret Hammond, three minutes.
Margaret Hammond, reporting, Your Honor. Members of the city council, and staff, and audience. I feel very strongly about this because of the situation whereby the area that I live in, Adams Hill in South Glendale, is not represented, in a sense, by a council member. Because all the council members are, of course, live north of the freeway. And I think it's a good idea to have districting. I feel that the option of C1 regarding the ballot of amending the charter and, and having, calling for a districting by April, I believe that should go on the ballot by April 15 as far as the charter. And then do have, I believe you have to have a timeline. Can't let it keep hanging around and thinking about it, and blah, blah, blah. So in my opinion, I think you need to move on it as soon as possible, in all fairness to the people who are 100,000 people that live in the area that I'm speaking about below Colorado. So, which we would then have representation. I know there are loopholes in that. I was just reading about the city, some stuff of the city of LA about districting and one councilman doing something, and the other one not being able to object. But I can't believe that that should be allowed to stand. I believe that if another councilman feels there's something wrong going on in another person, in another councilman's district, should be able to speak up. After all, it's his right as an American citizen, let alone as a member of elected council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Okay. Well, that's all the cards that we had.
I'll, I'll speak.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Weaver.
I want the voters to have as simplistic as a statement that is possible to put in a ballot. And that's why I support option E. It's like Mr. Manukian said, one step at a time. And E says simply, shall the city amend the charter to remove the at-large method of election for council members and establish an altered method permissible by law? One sentence, yes or no? Measure A, or option A rolled into measure one, everything. But this gives us a chance to vote yes or no. And then, well, it'd be very rare, it says for the purpose of having district elections, that's in measure two. But if you already decided no on one, then two becomes pretty obvious you're not going to vote for that, I would think. That's an assumption on my part, I know. That's simplistic. Now, as far as a date certain on there, I think that's under the advice of our legal department, that if we do not put a date in there, we're opening ourselves up for an additional challenge. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
It, having, not having a date in there poses some risk, yes.
So that's what we've been getting counsel, counseled on, whether to take an additional risk. Yes, if we, if the ballot measure fails and people want to keep the at-large, there's still a risk. There's a risk either way you go. But we will have a better feel what the public thinks, just asking the simple question. Do you want to change that to at-large? I mean, do you want to keep at-large, or do you want to go to districts? I know that I endorsed a guy named Gus Gomez from Adams Hill some years ago, and he got elected to council from, from Adams Hill area. So the, I think the voters are pretty astute in how they decide to vote. It's the person and the message that turn people on or off. And I think they're smart enough to, to decide what they want. So, like I said, I think working up this option E, separating the two, so people can read two distinct sentences, is much better than rhyming it all together in one long paragraph. Some people just say, to heck with it, and walk away from it, and won't vote for either one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Devine?
Okay, I'll keep it simple. I am also in favor of option E. I think it, it gets the process started, as was said, and yet, we're still amending the charter to give you the option of districting. And we can, after, whether it, if it passes, then we can go ahead with the plan. This option gives the voters the chance to, to voice their opinions, to be involved in the process. And I think that's exactly what our government is about. So B and D, I don't feel have enough voter participation. I think this one allows for that. It gives us flexibility, it lowers the risks of a lawsuit, and so I will be in favor of option E.
Mr. Mayor, may I add one thing?
Sure.
I didn't mention, on option E, the second part of the ballot says clearly in there, "Requires the council to see public input." So that's what--
Okay, thank you.
--Miss Devine was just saying.
Ms. Devine, I'm just going to make a comment, just call it to your attention, that option D is the only one that leaves both parts--
Right.
--both parts of it to the voters only. So it has the most--
I thought that was C.
--and the only exclusive voter approval process. None of the other choices do. I just want to point that out.
And option C too, although--
Option C, but option C still imposes this 2017--
Correct.
--deadline, which D doesn't. I just wanted to point that out to you.
And if I could, so I just want to make sure we're clear on what, and if you're going to go with option E, ultimately, I don't know, I want to presume, but option E has both measures F and G on the ballot. One would amend the charter, the other one would require a process, and then the council could either, and that's what we need direction to. Does the council then want that measure to have the option of adopting an ordinance, or going back to the voters, or just going back to the voters? But Mr. Weaver's absolutely right. What option E does is that if the voters vote no on the first part of it, then it becomes a moot point at that point. So that's clear, but they are two separate measures, they're tied, they're tied together in the sense that they're both going to be on the ballot at the same time, but they can be adopted separately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, during the course of my comments, if at any moment you feel that I'm straying too far into items that should not be discussed before the public, I want you to immediately jump in--
Okay.
--and stop me. So ladies and gentlemen, never before in the history of our 106, 108-year-old city has the fear been struck into the establishment more than this one letter from a law firm I think they're based in the Antelope Valley. Never before. Based on this one letter, we are contemplating changing a century-old system of voting, which is embedded in our charter. And that system of voting is having your five elected representatives come from the at-large region. That means from the city as a whole. Now, in this letter, it's alleged that we are violating the California Voting Rights The allegations are that because of our at-large voting system, that certain protected groups of people are denied their choice of candidates to be elected to the city council. In this particular instance, the allegation is either expressly or implied that the Spanish surnamed residents, registered voters of Glendale, have been denied their preferred candidate. Does anyone remember Rick Reyes, council member, elected, and served as mayor as well, with distinction? Does anybody remember Gus Gomez? Mr. Weaver does. Council member, also mayor. Does anybody remember Frank Quintero? How can we forget Frank? We liked him so much, we brought him back for an extra year. These gentlemen have Spanish heritage, and they were elected to the city council by the at-large voting system. I'm not sure that the law firm that goes around the state cherry-picking cities to change their voting system was aware that we have three distinguished members with Spanish surnames, Spanish heritage, elected to the city council by the at-large system over the past, Gus was here not less than 10 years ago, Rick Reyes a little longer, Frank more recently.
Ninety-three.
Now, again, stop me if I get too far, Mr. Garcia. The ultimate irony of this, the ultimate irony is that the precincts where there is a high percentage--
I would discourage you from going down that line. No way you're going.
Really?
Yeah, just because it's, that is--
Is it closed session?
Closed session, it's information--
Wasn't that in the letter? Wasn't the letter a public--
The letter is public, but there's no information in the letter about that, and--
What is information you got from his political consultant?
And it's--
I'll back off. The assumptions, the assumptions that are, that these attorneys make are so flawed and so wrong, that if you were to hear the details that I was about to tell you, you would be shocked, and you would shake your heads and say, "Why on earth is the city council jumping through these hoops to satisfy these attorneys?" Are we that afraid of being challenged, that we're willing to change our 100-plus-year system of voting, which I dare say has served the members of this community exceptionally? I don't think we should. I really don't think we should. We're chasing a target, we're running scared, where we have no reason to be scared. The residents of Glendale should stand proud in our multiculturalism, in our efforts to bring the community together, and not be split apart. And dear Margaret, perhaps your worst nightmare would be someone elected from your district that has moved into the area as a renter and has been living there for less than a year. That's the person who could represent you. And believe me, the other members from other districts wouldn't come close to telling that individual what to do. That's his district, that's his territory, get off my turf. This is what going to districts is going to do to this city. It's going to tear our soul apart, neighborhood by neighborhood. I am so against this district proposal, I can't tell you. I'm, although, let me say that I have faith, the same faith that I have in the voters, to elect the five councilmen that you see here, one absent. I have faith that you will see through this scare tactic that this law firm is bringing against Glendale. Oh, sure, they have one against other cities, but I assure you, the demographics of those other cities are completely different than what we have here in Glendale, and the voting record of those other cities are completely different than what we have here in Glendale. We embrace all cultures. We vote not on cultural lines, but on who's going to do the best job for the entire city, not just who's going to bring home the bacon to the neighborhood between Colorado and Harvard, between Brand and Central. That's how this city is going to be torn up. So, to cut to the chase, I think I would support option D, which is going to give the, give the voters the first opportunity to decide whether they can see through this charade, this farce, this shakedown that we're being faced with by the law firm, and not setting a rigid timeline to complete that. If, in fact, the voters agree that we should be going to districts, if, if they truly, in their own heart of hearts, feel that we should be, then we have to be very careful as to how we craft those districts, and not just have a few meetings, and have a smoke-filled room, and have the lines drawn up, and, and put before the voters in a very short period of time. So I personally think this is a sham, but I'm going to support option D, because I'm throwing my support and my trust back to the voters of Glendale to see through this. Thank you, Mr.--
Mr. Mayor--
Commissioner Najarian?
May I say, Mr. Najarian, I support you every single word you said, except for option D over E. But otherwise, totally agree, I think we all do.
I think we do.
Okay. Councilmember Najarian expressed himself very eloquently, and expressed many of the sentiments that I have. There really isn't polarized voting in Glendale. The facts, which fortunately, Mr. Najarian couldn't make a prevy to prove that, but nevertheless, so this is in front of us, option D is the one option that takes all the control away from the council and gives it to the voters, to the residents. You will get to decide whether you want to go to districts, and you will ultimately get to decide what those districts are, and when you want to go to those districts. And that's why I support option D. Very important that this rigid, forced timeline is not there. We're not shoving this down our residents' throats, we're not, you know, sort of forcing them into something. This allows the voters to vote in a conscious, informed manner, after real public outreach has been achieved, after our voters have really made up their minds under normal, calm circumstances. And again, the voters will have ultimate control on, on both steps of the way, approving whether to go to, whether to remove the impediment to go into districts, and what those districts should look like. And that's why I support D as well.
Mr. Mayor, since we now have narrowed it down to two, D or E, can you clarify again, what is the big difference between the two, D and E?
And the importance, I think, of the timeline.
Two distinctions in D and E. The first one, it has to do, again, with the timing. Option E would still have a plan to have the districts in place by April 2017. Under option D, that could still occur, but it's not mandated to occur. The other distinction is, measure E would still, even if both of those subsets of measure E were adopted, the council would have the flexibility, once it's finished the public hearing process, to decide whether to adopt the plan on its own, or put it back to the voters. And as Mr. Mayor already stated, measure D would require that plan to also go back to the voters without that option. So those are the two key distinctions. And I would say, between the two, again, just from a purely legal perspective, measure E has the benefit of providing some definiteness, some finite time periods with which to act. And, you know, if measure D is put on the ballot and is adopted, we still could be subject to litigation. And, you know, I, being here in a public setting as the city attorney, you know, and I've said it before, what I think of the merits of the case, I think we, I definitely do believe we have a very strong case, but measure D would likely, or could lead to the scenario where we're moving ahead on trying to do a district plan, and also litigating in our case, because there's no, there's no definite plan. That could happen, I'm not saying it will. Because again, the attorney who was, who has sent us the letter has stated publicly that as long as, he has no desire to sue everybody, and so to the extent that we're moving ahead on a process, I would hope that he would hold to his word, and not, not bring litigation while we're trying to work this out. But just from a legal perspective, it's not certain that we could forestall litigation in the event that we're working under the auspices of measure D, or of option D.
Yes.
Is there any way that we can make a compromise and do option D with a timeline, so that we're not in that--
Well, measure D with a timeline is--
It's measure C.
Measure C.
It's measure C.
Hybrid.
The hybrid.
Let me make another argument for, for measure D.
Two attorneys sitting over here, good.
I would, I would--
We don't have a chance.
No, we don't have a chance.
This is, you know, sort of a responsible announcement. I would rather we proceed with the, in a calm, organized, well-informed manner, and end up with a good product, with the threat of litigation looming over our heads, or even possibly, if we get sued, we get sued, rather than be rushed into something and end up with a bad product, and regret it, and then have to revisit it, and then have to redraft it, and then we look like clowns. Also, in terms of the timeline, no matter how we work this, unless both, both issues are decided on the April ballot, if there's, I mean, I'm not aware of any other city, citywide municipal election between 2015, 2017. So we would have to call a special election, or either tack it on to the national elections or countywide elections. No matter how you cut it, that means an additional expense of $300,000 to $800,000. I remember this conversation we had last time around, when we were considering what we're going to do about the interim position of councilmember Manukian. So why would we allow ourselves, in addition to all the eloquent arguments brought by councilmember Najarian, why would we allow anyone to force us to spend another $300,000 to $800,000 to hold special elections on this issue? We'll do it when we're good and ready. And our residents will end up deciding when that is or how that is.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would add that if the residents saw fit to change the charter, so that we go to districts, I don't think any judge sitting in any court would second-guess our timeline to perform our due diligence in creating issues like, how does the district be formed? Do we want seven districts? Do we want five? Do we want six? Let's not forget that there's also the possibility of including an at-large elected mayor. Along with that mayor's position, maybe a whole different set of powers that that mayor may or may not be given. Does he have veto power? Does he merely run the meeting? Does he have the ability to choose the city manager or the city attorney? There's a lot to be done. And if we're going to completely change the way we do it, I'll stand before any court in the land and argue that we're acting with due diligence, and our due diligence requires that we reach out to the neighborhoods, to each and every group, block by block, to find out how they feel about this. As we craft our districts, as we craft the populations, as we check the demographics, as we decide about an elected mayor, is it a two-year term, is it a four-year term, is it a one-year term? There's a lot to do. So if we're going to change the way we run this city in such a drastic fashion, I don't think we should be put under an artificial timeline, again, because we're afraid of some law firm up there in the Antelope Valley that's going to stick it to us. I'm ready, I have half a mind to say, "Let's not put anything on the ballot, let's just go directly to the lawsuit and fight these guys head-on." But again, that would be taking it out of the voters' hands, the residents' hands. So if, I think option D is the best, that it takes us to that point, but puts us on the track to make these serious and permanent changes to our city that require a little more time than perhaps an, was it an August 2016 timeline, or something that you had put there, which is a little more than--
About 16 months.
Be a little more than a year away from, well, we'd be voting on this in April 15--
Yeah, and be 16 months after that.
And we'd have to get the process going and have it again on the ballot 16 months.
Are you saying that your time in court would be pro bono? You wouldn't charge?
I would, you know what? On the record, I would stand, and I would defend this, either as a witness--
Pro bono, yeah.
--as a legal intern, if I don't meet the standards of our fine city attorney's office, I will run the copy machine to fight this, but I feel very strong about this.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I--
Yes.
It's kind of the wording that I have trouble with, because D says, "City council shall pass, place a measure on the ballot to adopt the district plan." But E says, "Amend the charter, remove reference of an at-large election from the charter." That, to me, as somebody reading it, would tend to understand that more than what is on measure D. I don't know, is it possible to hybrid the two, take up, like, the first measure?
Well, both measures have the provision to remove the language from the charter.
Identical--
Yeah.
But this one just says, "Place a measure on the ballot."
But that's, if I may, that's the ordinance part of option D, there's, if you turn back to the page, it's got the charter amendment, which talks about removing the at-large requirement from our city charter.
I didn't go to option D far enough.
That part is identical.
Yeah, so the only difference is, is you're not setting a timeline--
Okay.
--and you're requiring it--
You're right, I didn't go back far enough.
You're requiring any district plan to go back to the voters. Again--
I think we might have both missed that.
Yeah, I'm just basing a lot of my decision on the fact that the timeline is so important as far as a, you know, future lawsuit-- The risk is.
I don't think.
Don't be afraid, Ms. Devine. Let's stand up and it's not like we're just kicking it down the road and saying, "Ha-ha, we fooled everyone." But if we have to go in that direction, as someone who does a lot of outreach in the community, just coming off your successful campaign, you know what it takes to listen to everyone. And this is, this is serious.
Well, yes, but this option doesn't mean that I'm not going to listen to people or that they're not going to have an opportunity to speak. However, if this vote is two to two, then we, someone has to break the tie, right?
It can't wait.
Either that. This is our last meeting. We could, we could also, we would have to, if there was a two-two tie, we'd have to have another regular meeting in January and try to get Councilmember Friedman to call in if necessary. But yeah, the rule is if it, if a vote ends in a tie, either the tie has to be broken or carries over to the next regular meeting.
Well, I'm. Did your discovery of that first part of it being identical, D and E, does that change your mind in any way?
That helps some, but I'm still concerned about the date.
And again, let me state it this way. I think under option D, the worst case, the worst-case scenario is, and it's not an unreasonable worst-case scenario, is that we're going through the districting process and we're litigating a case. So I just want you all to be aware of that. That's the risk. That's what we're looking at. And that's why, if you can sense a sense of concern in my voice, that's what it is. But it's certainly an option. If I didn't think it was a legally viable option, I wouldn't have put it here in front of you. It's certainly something you can do, but you just have to be aware of what the risks are of going with option D.
Well, as was suggested before, if Mr. Najarian will be second chair on this suit, maybe we could.
So the public understands, we've had long hours of discussion on this in closed session. So might seem like we're just seeing this for the first time? No. We've discussed it length, got legal opinions, consultants' opinions, whatever. So you have to understand, we're quite concerned of the outcome and what it might mean to the city in terms of lawsuits and whatever. So that's why we're sitting here going through this debate.
All I know is that Mr. Najarian and I are both attorneys and we're not, we don't seem to be.
That's what scares me, you're both attorneys.
And Mr. Garcia, I mean, here's the point. If we were to show a judge that we are making a good faith effort in moving forward and we're just not sitting back, you know, chuckling about it, "Ha-ha, we fooled the public," that's certainly going to go a long way in showing our efforts to resolving the CVRA issues that we have. And I think that, you know, I don't know how a judge or a court could hold that against us, that we're going forward with this.
And certainly, and that's, that was my thought initially, that we would have at least some good faith effort and we'd be able to show that. And I think that's something a court takes into consideration. Just by way of example, the city of Whittier had, before they had adopted their charter amendment, that's, they were doing the same things. But it wasn't until they had adopted the charter amendment that says they're going to amend their charter and they're going to go to districts by a date certain. Did that court in that case, again, it's different, it's going to be a different judge each time, did the court in that case say, okay, the city has committed to this and so I'm going to dismiss the litigation? So that's sort of the risk, just so you're aware. But certainly, I, you know, I know if measure D is on the ballot, it's framed as a charter amendment and going to districts. And so that's the way it's framed to, that's the way you're framing it, that's the way it's being framed to the public, and that's the way it's being framed in the event of any litigation. It's not framing for the sake of a litigation position, that's the way it is. You're, I get the sense that, you know, if this gets adopted and put on the ballot and the voters vote for it, that there'll be an earnest effort by everybody on this dais and the public to get a district plan in place as soon as possible.
So all we're doing is being hung up on the date or no date, right?
Correct. And, and just, it seems like, again, measure D requires any district plan to go back to the voters and option C, or excuse me, option A really, would allow you, or if you took option D but still left it up to council in the future to decide whether to send it back to the voters or to adopt it, that's a separate variation of that that the council could adopt. But just so clear, option D is voters vote in April, we come up with a district plan and then whenever that happens, we go back to the voters. That's measure D or option D.
And just let me emphasize one more point. Under option D, the council can still decide to set special elections if we choose so and have the voters still decide on the ultimate outcome of the districts. Then again, that's not something I'm looking for because, again, why should we incur the expense of going to special elections? That's a very, very expensive proposition. Every time we have the county involved or, you know, we don't have good elections. So again, last time I think we were quoted the price of minimum of $300,000 all the way. If we don't even, if we do a special election that's completely independent of the county, something like upwards of $800,000, we can ask the clerk, upwards of $800,000. So why are we committing ourselves to this? We'll have that leeway to do that, but that's not something we should, we should be signing on to right now.
Two attorneys against one attorney.
No, I don't think that attorney's against this. That attorney's just accentuating the risk involved, but there is a risk involved.
There's a risk involved if, if the public says no.
Yeah, there's, exactly. So we're assuming the public's going to say yes in the first place.
Yeah. And if these options, but the voters say no, then, you know, then your status quo until.
So why, you know, pigeonhole ourselves from now when we don't even know what's going to happen after the first.
You think, Ms. Devine, should we go the other side and we hang them out to dry?
You can blame us.
Yes, we'll blame them.
You can blame us.
And you're all witnesses.
All right.
Okay?
Yes, we'll put it in the hands of the voters and all counts.
Two attorneys to one, you lose.
Again, and again, it's, these are options that are all available to you. I, you know, obviously, my preference would be option A or option E just because it provides, it provides a timeline but at the same time flexibility for the council, but it's the council's decision. The only thing on option D, I just realized, the, no, this is just to be, make sure we're clear, consistent with the intent, if this is the one that's put forward, the ballot question writes, reads, "Shall the city institute by district elections for city council by amending charter Article IV, Section 1, and adopting an ordinance requiring the city to prepare a district plan?" That should be, at the end, should be, comma, "Subject to voter approval." I mean, that's consistent.
Absolutely.
So if that's, that's ultimately the motion that needs to be included in there as well.
I guess you got a four to nothing vote.
So let's move eight.
Say you move option.
Actually, it wouldn't be, it would be, it wouldn't be any of those options that are on the list on the agenda.
Just say you move option D.
It's a motion to move, and let me, maybe I should read in the record what the items are. So it would adopt a resolution placing a ballot question on the agenda, on the, excuse me, a measure on the ballot for the April 2015 election. The ballot question would read, "Shall the city institute by district elections for city council, comma, by amending the charter Article IV, comma, Section 1, and adopting an ordinance requiring the city to prepare a district plan, subject to voter approval?" Question mark. And then the charter language would be, would be the same as the other one, so there's no change there, except that the first sentence of the charter would read, "The council by ordinance, subject to voter approval, shall provide for a by-district method of conducting municipal elections for the city council." And then the rest of the changes to the charter are the same as the other options. And then Section 2 of the ordinance that comes along with measure D reads, "The city council shall place a measure on the ballot to adopt the district plan." So that's, that's where, that's option D and this is the, if that's, if the council desires to introduce option D, that would be, that would be the motion.
You're going to.
Introduction. Are we introducing this?
No, it would be a motion to adopt this resolution.
So I will, I will move to adopt that resolution as stated by the city attorney.
So unless one of us second said, you like to pass the gavel.
I'll pass the gavel.
Put the two attorneys on the spot.
Okay, there we go.
We're still going to vote for it.
And I will second that motion.
Okay.
We have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Sinayan.
Yes.
I'll pray we don't end up in a lawsuit either way.
And then if I may, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there's a second, there is a motion at the end that relates to the ballot arguments, is calling for the ballot arguments. That is item 8C4. So I just need a motion approving that. And that would, it's a resolution.
I'm with 8C4.
Second.
Can we have the roll call, please? Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Hi.
Weaver?
Yes.
And just so people know, the, any persons who are interested to write arguments for or against can submit those requests by January 2nd. The council will be deciding on January 13th who to appoint. As you recall from prior ballot measures, there's a, there's a order of people who must be appointed to write the arguments. So first, the council must look to elected officers of the city to write arguments for or against, and then it goes to appointed officers of the city, then it's any bona fide association of citizens, and then it's individual voters. So we get all the, we get all the requests in and we bring them to you and you'll have to appoint them in the order of people who submit requests.
We can ask you to draft it.
If the council wants to sign an argument for or against, it can designate our office to draft it and then the council members can sign it.
Better have an attorney do that.
Does that create a problem in our, if there's litigation?
We'll talk about that later.
Always a caveat.
Okay, so that was, right, so that was 8C4.
Jeez.
And we voted on that.
Okay, thank you.
Next item, please.
At 8D is city manager and city attorney regarding placement of revenue measures on the ballot for the April 2015 general municipal election pertaining to an adjustment of transient occupancy tax from 10% to 12%, and adoption of a transient parking tax of 10%. U1 is a resolution to submit to qualified electors a measure related to the city's transient occupancy tax and directing city attorney to prepare impartial analysis of proposed measure. 2 is a resolution to submit to qualified electors a measure related to the transient parking tax and directing city attorney to prepare impartial analysis of the proposed measure. 3 is a resolution calling for arguments for and against transient occupancy tax ballot measure. 4 is a resolution calling for arguments for and against transient parking tax ballot measures.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'll be relatively brief, if only because you have covered much of this territory last month. Under the California constitution, the city council cannot raise taxes on residents and impose such taxes only the voters can. Today, we have in place a transit occupancy tax, or TOT, sometimes referred to as a bed tax or hotel tax. Basically, it is a levy upon hotels, motels, and other such establishments for purposes of generating revenue to the general fund of the city. Today, that TOT is at 10% of the rate that is charged. That goes, again, into the general fund and it gets used for the various budgeted items within the general fund. We do not today have a transient parking tax as some cities do. This is similar, I guess, in concept to a TOT, but applies to parking lots, parking stalls for hire, parking garages, where there are charges for service, not necessarily for hire, but charges to park. When we brought this to you in November of this year, we asked for your direction to prepare these two potential measures and give you the option as to whether or not we would institute a TPT, or transient parking tax, for the April 2015 general municipal election and/or increase from 10% to 12% the existing TOT. If you were to move forward with the TPT, the parking tax, at the rate that is suggested, 10%, which is consistent with what you see in the surrounding area, that could generate about $1.8 million to the city's general fund. If you were to increase the existing TOT from 10 to 12%, that would generate about $800,000 to the general fund. At this point, because these are general taxes, the general tax threshold, they would go to the general fund, be used for general purposes. Council, of course, sets that budget. We have, as you know, in the general fund, the economic development department in the wake of the redevelopment dissolution. It is not unlikely or unheard of that these funds would be able to be allocated through the general fund budgeting process towards economic development or towards the betterment of downtown Glendale where much of our hotel operations are located and where we have a good deal of pay parking. It is worth noting that the TOT generally is, and actually more than generally, is not paid for by residents of Glendale, but rather business travelers, folks who are visiting, tourists for any number of reasons. And so oftentimes, it is seen as something that is worthwhile and acceptable in the local tax structure. At this point, I can tell you that 10% is, which is what our TOT level is, is well below the market. In fact, I believe we are the lowest. If you look at the attachment in your staff report, all of our surrounding areas in the Los Angeles metropolitan area are at 12 and even some at 14 and even higher percentage. So to the extent that we would be keeping consistent with the market, that we could generate funds that could be dialed into economic development and other general fund purposes, possibly even to help support an asset like the Alex Theater in the downtown district, we believe that the TOT makes a good deal of sense for the council to at least put it before the voters because, again, you cannot raise taxes, only the voters can raise taxes. Conversely, considering the wide scope of the proposed TPT and if the council wanted to adjust that scope, or maybe it only applies to downtown, or maybe it's only for, it's not for office building parking, or any number of, any other changes that you might want to consider, and considering that you also just gave direction to put on the ballot another ballot measure relating to districts, I think both city attorney and myself would counsel that if you were willing to move forward with a single tax measure, that would be better than putting both tax measures on there if it was to the council's agreement because if you put both, that may kill one or the other. And if you were going to put one, the one that is likely most palatable, that does the least impact to our local residents and taxpayers, would be the TOT increase from 10% to 12%. Again, that would generate about $800,000, roughly $400,000 per percentage. At this point, Mr. Landis Faim, our economic development director is here, certainly Mr. Garcia, myself, Mr. Elliott, our finance director, can answer any question you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Any questions?
Yes.
A comment. This one we had on the ballot before and it just, I couldn't believe that it was voted down, the TOT, when you know that nobody in this city will have to pay a single penny. It's just people coming into the city on business, on vacations, they're the only ones that pay. And we're lower than just about every other city. So I like, I agree with you, Mr. Ochoa, putting them both on might be too much at one time. We're already putting the district thing on and just this one, and if it's explained correctly, that the TOT does not affect a single resident in this city. With that, I'm going to go have a drink of water.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Why don't we have our speakers come up and express themselves about this issue? We have two cards, Mike Mohill followed by Harry Hall. Three minutes, good, Mr. Mohill?
Thank you, Mayor Sinayan and council members. My name is Mike Mohill. You know, Glendale was one of two cities in the county that was considered, we don't have any business tax. Now we are, we're no longer that honor. Okay? Yep, yep. We used to have the honor of not having any business tax here. We call it a fee instead. This is another fee. Fees, taxes, the same thing. It all gets down. In this case, we're going to have the people, see, you already asked the residents to pay fees in water, electric rates, and you've taken that money and you transfer it over to the general fund. Now, Mr. our city manager says, well, that's going to take care of things like, help support the Alex Theater. That's true. But the first obligation of government are the contracts council members sign. Now, I am looking at this piece of paper and it shows me that this afternoon you were in closed sessions with our different public employees' unions negotiating. Now, if I know about public employee unions, they always negotiate for more benefits. The question is, where are they going to get the money for the benefits? Well, if you raise the taxes, come July, when the memorandum of understanding come up, you can find $800,000 in benefits. It won't go for the Alex Theater, ladies and gentlemen, the viewing audience, it'll go for the salaries that the unions are negotiating with, as far as I can see. The other thing is, what concerns me is the general fund. Again, it's a GW transfer, it's money over to the general fund. The last item is, long as we're going to put something on the ballot like this, why don't we put term limits on the ballot? The same. The same time? One, let the, look, if the people are gonna vote for council districts, why don't we allow them to vote for term limits?
Mayor, this has nothing to do with the item.
Mr. Mohill, let's stay on the subject matter.
Okay. Well, again, you know, we don't need, we don't need, we wanna be a business-friendly city. We don't need to advertise that we just went ahead and raised the TOT tax, or anything else you want. We've been, the residents have been taxed, the businesses have been taxed, they've approached me, the businesses. You now have a tax for the businesses, another fee all the time, cigarette tax. When does it stop? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill.
Mr. Mayor, if you look at the comprehensive reports put out by Cozmont and Associates, we have the lowest tax structure around in Southern California. Low property tax, no business tax. What is this city supposed to operate on? No taxes and no service. Think about it. You're lucky you live in this city because of the tax structure that we have. Then to put a tax on where nobody here pays it, I mean, defies all logic why we should turn it down.
So I would support putting this, putting the transient.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's no more, I'm sorry.
Why don't we take Harry Hall?
That's okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Should you decide to move forward tonight with this ballot proposition, I'm, sorry, I forgot, Harry Hall, I'm chairman of the Glendale Arts. Should you decide to move forward, we may be in a position to support it if the funding was directed to the Alex Theater. The Alex Theater is an important piece of, in the downtown. It helps support businesses and generates tax revenue for our city, and it adds to the high quality of life that we enjoy here. It's the People's Theater. I know you agree, because you recently funded a major expansion for us, and that has set us up for success on a lot of levels. The theater has recently staged a number of critically acclaimed performances, and just recently, we had four sold-out shows. This current season's in full swing, some fantastic shows are just around the corner. Big band shows like In the Mood, musical theater, Billy Elliot is gonna be here, Celebrate Dance, Arturo Sandoval, the Glendale Youth Orchestra, all are coming here soon. Recent performances have been very well received and been enjoyed by a wide audience. But with the demise of the Redevelopment Agency, and the challenge now is for us to develop a sustainable source of funding for the management of the Alex Theater, and we believe from sources other than the general fund. Glendale, just want you to know that Glendale Arts looks forward to working with you to think outside the box for sources of funding for the theater. It might be parking revenue or hotel tax from folks using the downtown, but it might also be something else. In any event, Glendale Arts wants you to know that we're looking forward to be partners with you in thinking about it and being creative. We believe that the funding answer should be in something other than general funds or a tax burden on our citizens at large. We're working hard at the Alex, and we are looking forward to seeing you at some great shows soon. Thanks very much.
Mr. Mayor, I assume if we dedicated all the money to the Alex Theater, nobody could blame us for putting it on pensions.
I would just submit to you, sir, that if you do dedicate it, it becomes a special tax, and the threshold becomes 2/3. So to the extent that there's maximum flexibility, trusting the council's good judgment each year as you go through your priorities and the strategic goals for the department, that economic development is indeed one of those key priorities.
50% is better than 66.2/3.
Before we move on to the subject matter at hand, now, explain to me again, the business registration fee that we instituted some time ago. It's not a percentage of anyone's revenue or anything like that, so it can't be a tax. But also, does the city actively sort of seek out and monitor those businesses that do business in Glendale and are not registered? I mean, is there some kind of an enforcement mechanism that we implement?
Let me do the first part. We used to have a zoning use certificate that had been in place for some time. In California, Mr. Garcia will certainly attest to this, we have perfected the ability of defining what is and what is not a tax, beginning with Prop 13 in this state. And so quite clearly, the zoning use certificate, which now has become the business registration certificate, same vehicle, effectively the same amounts of money, we have that in place. The council did allow us to make that conversion. It most definitely is not a business license tax. Oftentimes, a business license tax would be a flat fee, and then a dollar for each employee, or in the case of the city of Los Angeles, it's actually gross receipts, and that can add up tremendously. The business registration certificate and its predecessor really is an opportunity for us to find out who is doing business in town, and be able to give, for economic development purposes, some idea about who works here, what their needs are, and how we can better create the environment that will foster business growth. So the mechanism for enforcement, as the zoning use certificates come due, or now the business registration certificates come due, we send out the letters, ask folks to come in, they fill out the form, and basically let us know, inventory cataloging, who is here and what business they're doing.
How do you know who to send it to?
We will go through, first, I'll defer to Mr. Foy, because I believe we get folks coming in when they first come to town, and then for people that actually played by the rules, that have, that had the old zoning use certificate, we would be able to contact them.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, how do you know if someone came into town? How do you know if someone played by the rules? In essence, this is a good faith system, right? It's a self-reporting system.
Yes, but we also will cycle through the letters, asking folks, all business addresses, that we do have this program, that they should have come in and gotten a zoning use certificate. We do expect them to come get the business registration certificate. I don't know, however, and I'll defer to Mr. Foy, as to whether or not that is backed up by the administrative citation ordinance. I don't know that.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Foy.
Yeah, I think you've identified a real challenge of how to identify all the businesses. And our approach thus far is try to develop a comprehensive database, using a number of databases that the city or other governmental agencies have. One of the key ones will be Glendale Water and Power's commercial accounts. So we don't go into how much energy people are using, that's none of our business. It's just a matter of finding out who's opening up new accounts. There are state databases, the Glendale Fire Department conducts inspections, there are a number of databases we're trying to combine. If it were a perfect database, I would be thrilled. I don't expect it will be first time out.
If it's an office, a commercial building that houses offices, or, you know, if the landlord is paying the water bills, you're never gonna, you're never gonna know who's in, who's moved in, who's moved out, right?
Right, which is why we're not relying only on one database.
So I guess what I'm.
Conversely, if we did have a business license tax, we wouldn't have that issue.
That's what I'm, so that's exactly what I'm saying. So there are many ways in which the registration fee is different from a business tax. But sorry for that segue. Okay, I think Mr. Najarian wanted to say something.
Okay, and I'll be brief, and I don't want, I don't want the public to be confused by Mr. Mohill today. I don't want you to be confused by him in April, when it comes time to vote for this. I'm in support of the transit occupancy tax. So what that means is, on New Year's Day, when the film crew from CBS Sports can't find any room in Pasadena, and they come to Glendale, and they book a $200 room, and it's advertised as 200, at the end, when they check out, they're gonna have, instead of a $220 bill, which is a 10% occupancy tax, which we have, they're gonna have a $224 transit occupancy tax. That's not a tax on businesses, that's not a tax on the residents of Glendale, that's a tax on the visitors who come to use the hotels in this city. So I do support that. It is, I think it is modest, it is not burdensome in any event, and it certainly will go to the general fund, so we can help improve and maintain our services to the community.
A quick question. Specifically, our neighbors, to the east, to the west, and to the south, so our more significant neighbors, in terms of size and such, what is their TOT tax?
Pasadena is 12.11. We are at 10. I stand corrected. Burbank is at 10. L.A. City is at 14. And then as you go further out, for example, West Hollywood's at 15.5, Beverly Hills is at 14, Santa Monica's at 14.
I don't know that we're competing with the west side, but certainly, so Pasadena was higher.
Burbank is at 10.
City of L.A. was higher, and Burbank.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
City of Burbank charges their transit occupancy tax 10%. They have a 1% fee that they tack on. It's in essence, a TOT tax.
It's like a tourism, tourism fee, or something of that nature.
Tourism fee. So in essence, it's 11%.
It's 11%.
Okay. So it's higher than the 10% that we have.
Higher than the city of Glendale.
That's a little, a tourism tax.
Ms. Devine?
I want to thank Mr. Hall for being here again, asking, actually asking for a tax. I know that's kind of tough for him to do, but I agree that the arts, we need to find a creative revenue source and a way to get more funds to the arts, and I hope that we'll move forward and work on that. The parking tax, I'm afraid that would affect the residents, and I don't think it's the time to ask for a tax, and so I would not, I would not want to see that on the ballot. The TOT, you know, Glendale's become a destination. People want to come here, so we're gonna have a lot of visitors over the holidays, as Mr. Najarian said, and even, you know, just during the year. And this is a tax that the residents will never feel, will never have to pay. And so I'm all for it. It does not affect the residents, and I would like to see this on the ballot, and I hope that, I hope this time, the voters do have the wherewithal to pass this ballot measure.
Football teams stay here, collegiate teams. I think Arizona State was here at Embassy Suites. This year, I saw two of them in a restaurant, where they went out to wipe their seat out. That's life. We do get a lot spillover from Pasadena.
I just wanted to make one clarification, certainly being still relatively new. I don't know that we put the TOT increase on the ballot, but we did survey that. And the survey, the initial survey came back very, very strong, and then alongside other potential measures, I think it suffered by association and was deemed not sustainable a couple of years ago. But it wasn't repudiated by the voters, per se.
But have to be very careful on the ballot measure, that it says, this is no tax on anybody in this city. It's a tax on what's coming in.
And I agree that Glendale is becoming a destination. We want to keep it a destination, so we don't want to do anything to become an artificial impediment to people wanting to visit and stay in Glendale. But, you know, not reaping some benefits, financial benefits from Glendale being a destination, I think is a mistake in and of itself. It's like us not increasing the impact fees in a timely manner, then looking back and saying, hey, you know, we should have maybe done this a year ago, we would have had more funds for our parks and for our arts and for other things potentially also.
Just one other, one other thing, Mr. Mayor. The Airport Commission that I sit on is doing a lot of effort with UCLA, who is borrowing the Colosseum from SC for a few years, because that is, they consider that their home field, and we're trying to promote more flights into Burbank that support UCLA, or Hollywood, or whatever. Those flights coming in, if we can do the right branding and get them in, a lot of those are gonna come into Glendale to go into our hotels here. So we're gonna see spillover in this city from doing that, because we're closer than, well, we're closer than Pasadena, and I don't know what major, there's a few hotels in Burbank, but not like ours, I think. I don't get even alive for saying that, probably.
Okay. So I wasn't finished, I just got sort of interrupted, but ultimately, all we're doing is putting this on the ballot. If our residents think that it's not the right thing for the city, it won't pass. That'll be it, that'll be the end of it, so no harm done. So that's why I support putting it on the ballot.
Okay, so I'll move 8D1.
8D1?
Do you want to do 8D3 as well, Mr. Najarian?
8D3, which is the resolution for.
Call for the arguments.
Yeah, second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Council members, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman? Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Sinayan?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda. At 8E is City Manager regarding proposed changes to Transportation and Parking Commission, TPC. Commission on Status of Women, CSW, and Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale, CCBG. U1 is an ordinance for introduction on modifications to frequency of meetings for TPC. 2 is ordinance for introduction on modification of frequency of meetings for CSW. 3 is resolution appropriating of an amount of up to $10,000 to facilitate a strategic plan for the CSW. 4 is a resolution dissolving CCBG and designating Glendale Clean and Beautiful as the city's affiliate to keep America beautiful. 5 is a motion authorizing to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Glendale Clean and Beautiful ink and amount up to $28,000.
Maybe we should take these one by one, because these are, right?
We, yes, sir.
Totally different.
We can do the overarching presentation, and then answer your questions and the motions one by one, at council's pleasure.
Okay.
I will, I will give you a brief overview of what it is that we're asking, and then certainly our program supervisor, Christine Powers, can give you any degree of detail. At this point, as you know, our organization has changed dramatically, and not only has the organization changed dramatically, but also the reality in which that organization exists has changed dramatically, not the least of which is the number of staff that we have available to do any number of functions. One set of functions is the staffing of various committees and commissions that the city interacts with. So as you may recall, the Commission on the Status of Women has been an integral part of the Management Services Department last year, and it was staffed by Management Services staff. Last year, the staffing was transferred as part of the reorganization, where we lost a number of bodies in Management Services, was transferred to Community Services and Parks. Under this last go-around, the retirement incentive reorganization, the differential shifted to Community Services and Parks. They since have lost a number of key individuals. And thus, we have the idea of moving the Commission on the Status of Women back to Management Services. Now, in doing that, because we still are extremely light in terms of the staffing levels that we have, we look at two specific things. Unlike many, almost any of our commissions and committees, Commission on the Status of Women would do fundraising by way of the Jules Luncheon, would do programming by way of Camp Rosie and some of the other efforts, very worthwhile, great work that was done, but did chew up a rather large amount of staff time. So if we are bringing CSW back to Management Services, the idea would be to not have CSW do programming, not have CSW do fundraising, and if you don't have those events that you are working on, then the profile by way of the agenda and the amount of business on the agenda begins to sink, or shrink, rather. And to the extent that we could have monthly meetings, as are in the code today, we would end up, I believe, having a number of canceled meetings. And when we have those canceled meetings, then I think it starts to eat away at the credibility of the group and/or confuse the people, the residents, who would otherwise want to participate in those meetings, because they're not sure if the meeting's gonna happen or not. And so what you have before you in this particular case is moving the CSW, changing in the code, the CSW from a monthly meeting to a quarterly meeting. Now, that does not preclude the commission from having monthly meetings or beyond monthly meetings, as issues and timing may call for it, but that there are four regular meetings of the commission. I will also advise that one of the items that is here in your packet is to allow the expenditure appropriation of $10,000 in funds raised by CSW to facilitate a working group, a strategic planning effort, that will really chart the next stage of what CSW does as a commission for the city of Glendale. So that item exists, interestingly enough, really the only change in the code that we are bringing to you is the change in the timing, because the programming and the fundraising is really something that was never in the code, but rather something that evolved just as a, I'm sorry? The funding is the city? I'm sorry, I stand corrected. I'm sorry, I stand corrected. The idea that the CSW, lost my train of thought, so, sorry. At any event, oh, that CSW, the change that is being made is simply the date and timing versus the, the actual program and profile of CSW, because again, that's something that's evolved over time. With respect to TPC, Mr. Galanian, as now the head of Public Works, has indicated that thereto, the amount of material that's moving through TPC is such that it doesn't necessitate a monthly meeting, but rather an every other month meeting. One size doesn't fit all. One commission may go to quarterly, one mission, one commission may go to a biennial meeting. And then last but not least, and then we can certainly open up for any questions, is the Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale. The committee is interesting. It's neither fish nor fowl. It is a committee that has a quasi-commission affiliation with the city. It is referenced in the code, yet its members, unlike any other commission, its members are not appointed by the city council. It does have a fundraising component, and historically, those funds would be used to help hire staff, to help do programming like graffiti removal and other very worthwhile things. The commission's been an important, or the committee has been an important part of our neighborhood improvement efforts, yet at this point, in the wake of the dissolution of redevelopment, which has really shrunk the Community Development Department, and in the, with the, the reality that HUD continues to cut back on our CDBG funding and what's available by way of code enforcement, we don't have the capacity to have a staffing profile with the committee as we have in the past. And so what we are looking at, and, and the good news is that you have a committee, a very motivated group of folks, that have really resurged and found a new energy that are working, doing great work in Glendale. What you are seeing, however, is that the city, or rather, the Community Development Department is having to retrench and pull back away, as opposed to giving that same level of attention to the committee. And what we are asking by way of the code change is that we have the code reflect the evolution that is underway between Community Development Department and the CCBG. Great people doing great work. We're actually in this motion here, asking that the council designate them as the affiliate for Keep America Beautiful, and that we enter into an MOU up to $28,000 with the nonprofit organization that is, is very much attached to CCBG. And so you see that we still have this very strong affiliation, but we're endeavoring to, in the code, call CCBG, what, refer to it as we see it going in the future, as opposed to what it has been in the past, because what has been in the past, at this point, I don't think is sustainable any longer. So with that, Mr. Foy, Mr. Hagani, and certainly Ms. Powers are here to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you. Questions?
Do you have cards?
We have cards. We have quite a few cards. Now, I understand that...
I do, though, before we start that, yes. Mr. Cho, you said that the $10,000 for the CSW consultant was coming from their funds, and was there a correction on that?
That is a correction, ma'am. Ma'am, I'm sorry. The, the fundraising that they do, and there are considerable funds that are in their account, have to be used for programming, not for strategic planning efforts. That would come from city funding.
Any other questions? No. Okay, so I have a stack of cards, and I've been told that one speaker will actually end up speaking for all of them. I just want to confirm. Sam Engel will speak for Frank Michaels, Jane Vayar, Sheriff Varswayfield, Vaywold, sorry about that, and John Zirhat. So, Sam Engel, how much time do you want?
I've got a little bit of a response, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and some sort of context, and some recommendations. I don't know, maybe double, since I'm speaking for the whole group.
Five minutes?
We were asked, we were asked to put together one response for the whole committee, and so that would be...
That's fine, yeah, that's great.
And that's kind of what we're doing, and they won't do that.
Okay, go ahead. If you need more time, we'll give you more.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Sam Engel. I am the chair of the Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale for the year 2014, 2015. For many years, I had the privilege of serving as staff to this citizen advisory board, and during that time, I realized the value that this organization brought to the city where I live. And when I retired, I determined that this was an area where I could volunteer my time meaningfully and really get a lot out of it, put something back into the community that I worked for. Our five areas of emphasis that resulted from our strategic plan that we underwent this last year are important elements of what a top-notch city would be considered: prevention of litter, reduction of sources of litter, graffiti prevention and removal, encouragement of recycling and sustainability, community beautification, and above all, citizen engagement. These are all quality of life issues, and I get to work with other citizens whose names you called out, who believe, as I do, that these are incredibly important towards maintaining the quality of our city that all of our residents have come to expect, especially as it continues to grow and develop as it's doing right now under your leadership. As the staff report notes, this group is a combination of three prior advisory groups that were also created by various city councils over the years, and it's important to understand that, because this goes back, much as Mr. Najarian said, our election process goes back 100 years. The actual work of this committee goes back over 50, actually 50 years this year, 1964, when the Glendale Beautification Advisory Committee was created by the city council at that time. And it's focused for many years, that particular group, on beautification. Among their successes were the original landscaping along what was then the Southern Pacific Rightof Way adjacent to San Fernando Road. You drive down that street today, and all of the flowering pears that are mature trees there were planted by this group back in 1968. The campaign to eradicate sign blight, the city undertook a major, major rewrite of the city's sign code. Anybody remember the major sign on Brand Bowl? This is what I've been told, said Dr. Cowan, credit dentist, huge signs that were just notoriously ugly in our downtown. The Glendale Beautification Advisory Committee pushed the issue to get our sign code revised and get our downtown upgraded in the 1980s. And the first effort to rid the city of unsightly billboards, and the result of that is with us, all of us. The second group was the California Litter Education in Action Network, which was created by the city council in the mid-1980s, in response to the state solid waste management board's requirement that local governments have a way to engage citizens within our municipal service area to reduce litter and to change littering behavior. And that's the structure that our group has right now, and was created at the time. And in the 1980s, it was an unusual structure, because the state mandated that you place stakeholders in these particular issues on a committee that would be overseeing them. And that's what we have now, as the staff report says. Stakeholders include representatives, the chambers of commerce, because you guys all know that we have multiple chambers, the Unified School District, the Association of Realtors, who have a vested interest in what this community looks like, the Homeowners' Coordinating Council, and other beautification areas. That was innovative at the time, and it's a model that everybody else uses now, is bringing stakeholders to the table. The final group was the Knockout Graffiti in Glendale Committee, that was again created by the city council to address the graffiti problem that was quite honestly ravaging, ravaging our city in the 1980s. Their challenge was to undertake educational and prevention programs so that they could prevent graffiti before it got put up, and to create an awareness or a community ethic that graffiti in this city would not be tolerated. And you all enjoy the benefit of governing a city where that is the community standard now. And that was started by your predecessors many years ago. Their success is measured even today, in that graffiti in our city was reduced so significantly as students were educated about the stigma of graffiti and residents stopped accepting that graffiti was actually okay in their neighborhoods, that the graffiti removal staff was actually reduced from four to two people. Talk about reduction in staff over time, and that's what we have as a result of work of this, these committees over time. All of these groups, as the staff report noted, were consolidated in 1999 to bring some synergy between these different efforts, and as you're trying to do now, reduce city staff support so that they're just providing staff reports, support to one citizen advisory committee instead of three. My point in telling you this story, and it is a story, is that this model works very well and shouldn't be discarded just because the city is currently in a tough spot. We all go through tough spots. Cities like organizations go through good times and bad times, and we should now be working to get, together to get through the one that we're in right now. And we have some suggestions relative to the staff report that we'd like to present to you in just a little bit on how we would proceed through this. During the past 15 years, under the most current resolution, Glendale Clean and Beautiful has quietly gone about its work, probably with most of you not really realizing much. Mr. Weaver is a frequent presenter to some of the poster contest winners, but quietly going about its work, providing support to programs that were previously provided by the cities Mr. Ochoa says were not able to do much anymore, and doing programs of our own, generating income that was paid directly to the city to help offset the cost of these programs, totaling nearly $300,000 over the past 20 years. There's nothing to suggest that this model might, will not continue to be successful if we allow it to continue with some changes, as Mr. Ochoa suggested. While we believe that the quality of life issues tackled by the committee warrant some staff reports, staff support, we recognize that there have to be other work priorities at this time, given the changing nature of the city organization. And as we see it, there's two issues before you tonight relative to this one committee, if you decide to take this up tonight. The first is the administrative structure of the committee. It is unique, as Mr. Ochoa says, and as the staff report suggests, but that's what's made it successful. By designating these stakeholder organizations and allowing the committee to govern itself, council has guaranteed that organizations have a role in the programs and decision-making of the committee, and it's created ownership, an unbelievable sense of ownership among the people that participate of the issues that are important. We would request, as you consider tonight, that the basic structure of the committee remain the same, and that the relationship to the city remain the same, i.e., you maintain the advisory nature of the committee and in its, and maintain its role to the city to identify problems and recommend solutions. This empowers citizens in a phenomenal way to become involved in the very issues that they're likely to be initially concerned about with our city. The bylaws created by the 1999 resolution should be updated to reflect that change and/or updated to reflect current participant organizations that have a desire to join in solving these problems. The second issue before you tonight relates to staffing resources devoted to litter education, graffiti prevention, encouragement of recycling, and all the rest. As we noted previously, we on the committee understand the current staffing shortages, and we've already been working to internally change our programs and our internal organizational priorities to take on the functions that staff previously provided, so that we become a more volunteer-driven organization. To address staff concerns about resource shortages, the bylaws should be amended as well, to remove any reference to specific city departments providing support to the organization. To that end, Mayor, members of the city council, we're recommending that the council reject the staff recommendation and instead craft a solution which is based on option two to the attachment to your staff report, which, one, retains the current structure as an advisory and programmatic body, but updating the bylaws to reflect the current organization and its city administrative structures. Two, it immediately reduces the staff support, as Mr. Ochoa requested, that's being provided to the committee, and over time, limits it only to providing assistance on community cleanup days and work projects, so that we become free of staff support that the city's not able to provide. Three, transfers city responsibility for administering the Keep America Beautiful affiliate to Glendale Clean and Beautiful Inc., so that staff no longer has to do those administrative functions, which indeed are burdensome. Four, frees up the nonprofit corporation to act independent of the city and restructure itself to become a general membership corporation, as suggested by city staff. We're available to answer any questions as you go on through your discussion. We hope that you would consider our suggestions for you.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I think from Mr. Hagani's standpoint, and certainly mine, and the wonderful people that work on this committee, I don't disagree with anything that, that Mr. Engel had referenced, but to me, it seems as though if you play out the logical conclusion of everything that he described, it's what we're recommending that we uncouple the two, one from the city, because they are self-governing, that they are freeing themselves of staff support, that they would have the, the nonprofits that acts as, in this more general capacity. So certainly, I think that there is some angst about losing the affiliation of being directly tied to the city. Certainly, we're very appreciative of that. I would, I would submit to you, I'd submit to the committee, that I don't think our goals necessarily are changing from the evolution that is occurring with the committee now, and I'd, I'd hate to get caught up on jargon or terminology as opposed to what the goal is, because it sounds like the goal is very much the same, and, and the, the path that he described, boy, I tell you, that, that is right where we are headed, but if you play that out, they are, they become an independent group, effectively. But certainly, this is a positive, we want to make it a positive and keep it a positive, as opposed to taking something positive and turning it negative. So I want to make sure that the council knows from the staff perspective, we see and imagine ourselves as walking down the path alongside Clean and Beautiful Glendale as a partner, as opposed to having Clean and Beautiful Glendale being an, an agent of the city. We envision them, for all those reasons, being a standalone, equal partner with the city.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Ochoa, it seems to be, it seems to be that it's the affiliation that is so important to them. And I'm trying to figure, does that, how does that benefit them by being affiliated? Does that empower them in some way that, you know, that, it's an intangible thing, but if they feel it is...
Yeah.
What is the difference if they're associated as, as an affiliate or standing alone?
Certainly, I would have to defer to, to Mr. Engel and his committee. I would think that they would tell you that that helps in the issue of legitimization, of legitimacy, that they are tied to the city and thus, they become viewed as a group that, that is doing good work and is made up of serious people that are not wasting their time. And that absolutely is a laudable goal, and we would support them in that. I think we get to the same place by the city designating them as the affiliate for Clean or Keep America Beautiful. So I think we're, I think we're trying to do the same thing, get to the same point, and certainly, if you look at, at the very thoughtful suggestions that the committee gave, there's this evolution that gets to a point, I think they see themselves getting to a point that I would envision them getting to. It's a function of when does that happen, how soon, and the expectations that we would craft today, or next week, or next year, that basically reflect that in the code.
Maybe that's later rather than sooner. I mean, I don't know if you have heartburn with that scenario. Maybe they're, I don't know how they, long they've been combined and working together, because I, I know some of what they do, but, you know, maybe let them, well, what's the right word? Work together as one unit, all three combined, and it may be some time down the road to it, but I'd like to ask Mr. Engel, how much does it mean to them to have that affiliation? How does that benefit them, rather than us turning it loose? Can I, and Mr. Mayor, if I ask that question?
Yeah, please go ahead, Mr. Engel.
How much does the affiliation benefit you, tangibly?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I think you know the prestige that comes whenever you ask people to sit on what are actual commissions called out by either the charter or the municipal code. What has been a remarkable thing about people taking seriously their role on this is that it says very clearly that they are advisory to the city council and conduct programs on behalf of the, of the city in these areas. There's a, and we use this word, there's a cachet to that, that makes it far more, it provides people a sense of importance. I don't know, I don't know how else to say it. It provides people a sense of importance.
Does it permit you to draw more people to the organization? I mean, you're always looking for volunteers to come on.
Councilmember Weaver, members of the city council, I would say it certainly enhances the quality of people that come on, because they take their responsibility so seriously. And, and no...
Understood, understood. Thank you, Sam.
That's, and, and in deference to Mr. Ochoa, I would say the one difference that we have, I, I think we see ourselves as being, as, as being able to operate independently, at least for the time being, until the city comes out of the financial woods. I'd like to see us go back at some point. But, but in, I think the thing that would be helpful that we all have talked about, and we agreed that one person would speak for the group, is that we, we go and we're able to operate independently and reduce the burden on staff and the whole city organization, quite honestly, but still find a way to maintain that one critical sentence that's in there, because that does help us in a legitimate role, one, in with the community, but two, in recruiting really good members to sit on the committee.
Well, maybe that's true today, maybe it won't be tomorrow, because you'll be much more identifiable as a group and doing great things, and maybe... more identifiable as a group and doing great things, and maybe you'll say, well, we can stand independently, but not now, maybe. That's why I'm just talking about moving towards coming and affiliate in the future.
Mayor, or...
You don't know the answer to that.
Mayor Shenanee, or Mr. Weaver, members of City Council, you all know from going out and you, Mr. Najarian, you talked to Mrs. Devine about campaigning and how she's out with the community. You have all talked with the community. The people hold the city organization in high esteem, and there is a huge value in that, and I think that's what the committee does not want to let go of, the value that comes with that. And I think sometimes, having worked in the city, we sometimes forget about that, is how much the community looks up to that.
I got the drift.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir.
Is this a fiscal issue or no? It's more than that?
This is, this is a staffing and programmatic issue. To the extent that city staff really would not be engaged in any ongoing consistent way, other than maybe the occasional staff support, but our staff would not be there on a regular basis for meetings, for minutes, for things that may occur, that is the primary focus in terms of the operation. So to that end, if there is an annual or semi-annual event or meeting that we come together on, that may very well be the case, and I think that's where the committee is going. But to that end, if that is the case, that's kind of where the city staff recommendation is going in that direction, to call it what it is. Now, again, we wouldn't want terminology to get in the way of goal, but as long as the staffing and programmatic responsibilities are removed from the staff that we have in CDD, I think it gets arose by any other name.
So, so I see two issues here. One is that the group functions as a quasi-commission, yet it's not a truly, true commission, because it's not provided for under a charter or an ordinance. We don't get to appoint anyone.
They have it under ordinance.
We have it under ordinance.
Yes.
But we don't get to appoint anyone.
You do not appoint. A reso, I'm sorry, reso, reso.
Resolution, so it's not an ordinance.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay. So we, we're trying to decouple because, because of that or because we're trying to save money?
If, if...
That's, I'm trying to understand, which one's more important, or are they both equally important, or is one not an issue?
The issue for us at the end of the day is staff time. So if you...
Can we quantify what that, what that time is?
I would defer to Mr. Agani and Mr. Foy in terms of their staff, but to the extent that we, if we don't have staff assigned to the group or working as closely with the group as we have in the past, then the relationship that has been described doesn't, doesn't exist.
Right.
And to the extent, and truly, I think Sam and I probably have this difference of opinion, he would love and aspires to see the relationship reemerge as it once had been. My instinct, through this great recession and the changes in governance in California tells me, I don't see that coming back anytime too soon. And if it's not coming back anytime too soon, then we should, I think it's prudent to try to explore a new relationship, and I think that new relationship is less of the agency and its affiliates and more of the agency, the city, and its partners. And this group is already there because they have a degree of self-governance, they have a degree of independence and autonomy. So it seems that we are making our, my argument would be that we are, we're looking at the resolution and having that reflect what is reality and the reality of the future.
I understand.
So according to, correct me...
Can I, just one second. Can maybe, maybe Mr. Foy can attempt to quantify the...
Sure. Sure. We have, I have some figures from just two of the larger events that they put on, the Great American Cleanup, which just for the one day of the cleanup where we used our neighborhood services staff, our inspectors and the like, there was a cost to the city and staff of And for the I Love My Neighborhood poster contest, the, I'm sorry, there wasn't, there was also included some of the planning. And for the cost of the I Love My Neighborhood poster contest, a similar $19,000 charge. And then during, then of course, there is ongoing staff support throughout the year just before every meeting, and I have one staff member who probably spends at least a quarter of his time fielding phone calls.
So we're talking about 100,000, above 100,000, 100,000, what are we?
It's probably...
I know it's an approximation.
I'm going to say $75,000.
Okay.
At a minimum.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Foy. Yes, Ms. Devine?
So I just wanted, now that you're here, according to this, if we do this, this change, the city will still provide equipment and facilities and city media for promotional and fundraising. We just will not provide staff to put on the events and et cetera. I guess what I want to do is ask Mr. Engel if that's feasible. Can you put on these events without all of this staff? Can your group get the volunteers that, so that you are able to conduct these events?
Councilmember Devine, members of City Council, it's a different model for us. I think we can get there. I, I think we can get there. I don't think we're there right this second. I mean, it, it's not an off-on switch, it's, as Mr. Weaver said, it's kind of a progression, but I think we can get there. There are a number of groups like us across, across the country that do everything with volunteers, and we have a community that does a lot of volun, we all know that there's a lot of people come out and do volunteers. It's a, it will be an effort for us to marshal them and get them out, and I think we can, but it'll be a process to get there.
I know I've participated in the American Cleanup, is that what it's called? Yeah?
Great American Cleanup.
Washing the sweeping and doing all of that, and I thought, when you, when you mentioned $17,000, the first thing that came to my mind was certainly all of those people did $17,000 worth of cleanup in our city, but that's beside the point. What is your, how do you work with Keep America Beautiful? What's your affiliation like with, with that group?
Member Devine, members of City Council, the city of Glendale and, the city of Glendale is the actual affiliate with Keep America Beautiful, is the way we were structured back whenever we affiliated locally. It's another unusual situation in that Keep America Beautiful requires a citizen advisory board. The City Council designated Glendale Clean and Beautiful as the citizen advisory board for the local affiliate.
And so that will continue?
Yes, ma'am, we are designating them as our affiliate.
Yeah.
I would totally agree with, again, with Mr. Engel, that this is an evolution of sorts and that it occurs over a period of time, and to the extent they would be the affiliate, to the extent that we would approve or recommend that you approve an MOU, we still will be tied with them. I don't see anybody walking away from anybody else. The meetings that we've had have been, you know, tell me when the event is, tell me what you need by way of PR, tell me what you need by way of barricades that we might set up, things like that. We're there.
I want to make sure that Margaret Hammond also has submitted a card, but I wanted to make sure, Margaret, is this on the issue of Glendale?
Yes, it is.
It is? Would you like to come up?
But I, but I, he's not speaking for me.
Oh, he's not, that's right.
I...
That's why I'm inviting you up.
Mayor Shenanee, I never speak for Margaret.
No one speaks for Margaret.
Smart man.
Yeah.
Margaret Hammond.
Thank you.
Three minutes.
Name is Margaret Hammond. Good evening again. I was a member of this Clean and Beautiful for 12 years. How I was appointed was by the Glendale Historical Society. And the members, that's how they become. Glendale Beautiful has a representative, the realtors have a representative, the school district, we're not just, you know, like, we're from a groups that are involved in the city. And we raised our own money. We, the money that was raised, we paid for fundraiser, we paid for a part-time employee and other things that we did. Also, you, I don't know if you remember, we were responsible for getting the Glendale ordinance on smoking coming before you and supporting it, the market baskets that were all over the streets, a lot of the things, the graffiti, for instance, a lot of the things, we were responsible for, that group, and we were no spring chickens. We were all up, well up in our years. One of the ladies, where they were on there 35 or 39 years, Joe Mandoki was on 40 years, and up until we were retired this year, we put in a lot of time and did a lot of work. So I'm saying, for instance, we gave money for the equipment, for the graffiti removal truck. That came out of our funds. I mean, we did a lot of things with the money that we raised for the city. For instance, the dog poop stations, we were responsible for those, and there were, people pay for those and pay for the bags for them, which helps to keep the city clean. There's a whole lot of things that that group did and has done. We did it as people, private individuals, but attached to particular groups, and we reported back to our group as to what had been done. The Glendale coordinating has a member on there. So I'm saying, you know, we're not just a bunch of people running around thinking that we're important. No, we take it very seriously and that we're, our responsibility to the city and for doing things for the city. 10,000 children are reached by that poster contest. You don't think, that's a large number of people, future citizens that we reach and try to teach them about graffiti, removal, trashing, that sort of thing. That's the theme all the time. So we're a very important part of the city. I mean, that, we did work that city employees could have been doing, but we did it as volunteers and never got paid a nickel. Put in a lot of hours and a lot of backbreaking work, I can tell you. We used the plaza, we're the only group that's ever used the plaza for that gala event, and we raised money from that. Those are the way we raised money, and we worked at it for a long time, and so therefore I feel that we're worthy, that group, even though I'm not part of it anymore because of my 10 years that I was on it, is well worth and worthy of recognition and of keeping it as part of the city recognition. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Mr. Mayor?
That's the last speaking card. Yes.
For years, I, for years, I've done the poster contest up at the Civic Auditorium. They have, I guess, at least 300, 400 students there from elementary schools along with their parents, and I can't count exact numbers, but city staffers that are there, there have to be eight or 10 of them, taking photographs, they're up on the stage announcing, they're keeping things together, they're sitting at back tables. I can't count, I can't count the numbers of them, but it is city staffers now. If the Clean and Beautiful can do it, it's one thing, but that event occurs in the afternoon at usually 3:00, 4:00, I think, and I'm just wondering, people at work, how are they going to find people to be up there from their committee to actually do all the coordinating that it takes? It's not as simple as it looks, but that's just what I see from being there and, and speaking occasionally and seeing how many workers there are, and that is staff.
And you would, and you would still provide the, the equipment, the paper, the, all of the, the city would?
We would be providing that logistical support. It's the staffing that, on the regular basis that we have trouble.
You would be supporting the staffing?
No, not the staffing, all the logistical support.
That's why I'm concerned where they're going to find the people to actually run it.
As Mr. Engel points out, this is a very, it's become even more so, a very dynamic group, they're doing great work, we want to support that. We only say that if, if this relationship is changing, all we're looking to do by the reso is reflect that change in the resolution, not derail the good work that's been done and is being done, that's all.
Okay. What do we want to do on this? I think we should take this, these two items first, just because we've sort of engrossed ourselves in this issue.
Make motions on them?
Okay. So it would be items E4 and 5.
All right. Let me introduce the ordinance at E1, which is the transportation.
Sure.
To make it quarterly or whatever, and introduce the ordinance for, on occasion the meetings for the...
You don't want to engage in any discussion of that, nothing?
No, I understand.
Why don't we, why don't we go with items E4 and 5 first, and then we'll go back to 1, 2, and 3?
Okay.
Want to move those two?
No discussion?
Well...
Well, I get in the quandary of...
Done is discussed for...
Well, I just get in the quandary of trying to decide whether to separate Clean and Beautiful from the city, or do I go against the staff recommendation and let them stay on as affiliate, I guess? You know, I see both sides of it, but almost feel I don't have enough information, so maybe there events, if we had an idea of how many staffers were actually involved, how much work?
Well, I, that's why I asked for quantification of the expense involved, and we're...
We have the two staff people that spend a portion of their time, they work for Mr. Foy and the neighborhood services operation. Again, to the extent that what we're trying to do is economize on staff, if ultimately the council said you didn't want to adopt the language changes, certainly, Mr. Foy, Mr. Agani and I are, again, we're not looking to sacrifice a goal for terminology, our only interest here is that we believe that the, the language should reflect the reality, that's all.
I understand what you're saying, so if we vote to cut them loose, then we'll have to observe, does the Clean and Beautiful, the cleanup, poster contests go on smoothly like they have? We won't know until...
Or, or don't, and then do the same evaluation, sir. Right?
Okay. By that, if they can't, then we have to revisit, because both, both of those are very important to city, and the graffiti cleanup, all of them are, but until we cut them loose and see what they can do, I guess you're saying, and we can always bring them back in the fold if we have to.
There's nothing that can't be undone.
That's true. Every ordinance in the city.
And is, may I ask, is there a way that we can still let them use the city, city of Glendale affiliation, but yet not give them, not provide, not give, provide staff and, you know, whatever other...
In our most, yes, in our most recent meeting, we even talked to the extent of allowing the group to use city facilities for meetings, for, allow time to go through storage items and everything else. Nobody would be rendering anyone asunder.
Okay. So we could, we could, we can move a resolution that they are still city of Glendale Clean and Beautiful, but yet we do not provide, we cannot provide staff?
Any staff.
Or their functions, so that would be their responsibility.
We could provide facilities like the Civic Auditorium?
Correct, well, it says, equipment and, yeah. I don't know if one of that...
Is that a compromise?
Equipment facilities as needed, city media for promotion and fundraising.
The, the resolution effectuates that.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
I still move.
Second?
You're moving both 4 and 5?
E4 and 5.
4 and 5.
E4 and 5, okay. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Devine?
Yes.
Friedman? Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Harrison Onion?
Yes.
And anything can be undone.
E1, you've, you're introducing the ordinance?
Yes, I introduce the ordinance at E1.
On the E2 and E3, well, I guess 1's an ordinance, yeah.
I'll introduce the ordinance at E2.
Was there a question about the ordinance though, sir?
There's no question about the ordinance, the ordinance is, I guess we'll vote on it at a, at a different meeting.
On the 27th.
27th, I believe.
27th, yeah. I'm just, I'm disappointed, is there anyone from the commissioners?
I believe there's one commissioner that's here.
Christine is here. Christine Babumian is here.
Hi.
She powers.
Hello. Would you like, yeah, would you like to say something? I mean...
Oh, you got a card?
Didn't know...
Will we dissolve? Is that the resolution? Did you just dissolve us? I think you did.
That's the resolution, the, the bond between the city.
Bravo.
Okay, why don't we, we're, I'm sorry, please no interruptions from the, why don't we take item E2? Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Diane Lambalot, the newest member of the CSW. So I was appointed by Councilwoman Friedman at a time during this transitional period. So I don't really have anything substantive to add, but I did want to say, just introduce myself and let you know I'm here if there's any questions I can answer.
Great. Welcome. I think we voted on your candidacy at the last meeting.
Yes, I think so.
And I looked for you, you weren't here, but welcome. Glad to have you on the commission.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I mean, the ordinance been introduced, I guess?
Right, so with regard to number three, and let me just make sure I understand that, is that we're going to fund $10,000 of city money.
Up to, yes.
For the commission to do strategic planning, to set their goals in light of reduced staffing and reduced fundraising.
That's correct, sir. They have, at this point, an amount of money that they have raised, that my understanding in talking with commission members, they would like to support various issues, causes, groups in the community, and want to do that over a period of time in the coming year or years. How does that money get expended in the most effective way possible? What will the commission on the status of women represent going forward? Those are all kind of the meatier questions that the commission will wrestle with and really define through the strategic planning process. Up until this point, and I'm sure Councilwoman Devine can speak to this, a tremendous amount of effort was spent on the Jules Luncheon, on Camp Rosie and other programs. If they're not doing programming, if they're not raising funds, what will be the hallmark, particularly if they have tens of thousands of dollars that they would like to use to support women's and family issues?
I have a recommendation. Why don't we put off the voting on item 3, the resolution, until the 27th? That's when the ordinance will be voted on, because I think voting on 3 assumes that number 2 gets voted in on the 27th. That's fine. Okay. Why don't we do that, then?
Okay.
Okay? Do we need...
We will just carry that. They're not necessarily related, though. I mean, the frequency of meetings...
The answer that I just heard was that, yes, it's sort of in lieu of...
They aren't directly related, but certainly if the council, if the council were to say, no, find a way to do programming and fundraising, and thus continue with a monthly meeting, then we would not recommend appropriating $10,000, because they will continue to operate as the commission has operated in the past. What I would submit to you is that we wouldn't recommend that, because I don't see that as the most economical use of Ms. Powers' time, in light of where we are today.
Sure, but I think you agree that it makes sense to...
I don't disagree at all, sir.
No discussion.
Okay. Why don't we go to the next item?
Item 8F is Director of Human Resources regarding establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the City of Glendale. 8F1 is Resolution GCA and GCA confidential level classifications. 2 is Resolution GMA and GMA exempt level classifications.
A brief report?
Yes, Mr. Ochoa or Mr. Doyle?
I'm sorry, oh, we didn't, my apologies, sir. Did we do anything with TPC? Mr. Weaver introduced the TPC.
Introduced. Was. Introduced.
Yes, I was getting the high sign from Mr. Galanian. Long story, short, I'm sorry, wait. Go back to the reclassification. It is an appropriate time to have this discussion, in light of the discussion you just had. We, as you know, have just completed the most recent reorganization that resulted in the downsizing of the City of Glendale. And so what we have before you is the, kind of the realization of the strategy whereby we would drop the number of full-time positions and then look back at the organization and try to find ways to complete the same amount of work with fewer bodies. That means allowing the department directors the latitude to put people in the positions that they feel that they need them to be in to be successful, and also build capacity for the long term across our different departments. With that, I'll turn it over for a brief presentation from Mr. Doyle.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item is the introduction of a resolution involving classification and compensation for the various departments. As you know, anytime titles, classification titles are added or existing titles are changed or modified, it requires the amendment of the classification compensation resolution. In this case, we're looking at a number of new classifications, titles, and modifications as a result of some departmental restructuring. The most significant driver in this particular reorganization involves the implementation of what we're calling a enterprise resource planning project. This is a complete overhaul of the city's human resources payroll and financial automated system. This is a multi-year project which will take several key managers out of the, out of their normal functions within mainly the finance department and human resources, and place them into this very key, important project. As a result, we need to have the right managerial support staff in place and structure in place for this particular project, and also to run the remaining functions of our respective departments. It's a very key project, and our goal here is to make sure that we have all the correct pieces into place from a managerial standpoint. In addition to that, we do have some other isolated adjustments and new classifications within various city departments involving either adjustments to existing classifications to better meet our organizational needs, or new classifications all the way around. I can go through each of those if you like, or if you care to just answer your questions.
Questions?
Well, I...
Yes, Ms. Devine?
I went through the meetings and the discussions about this, and I had several questions, and I requested extra information, and I didn't get it until this afternoon. And in order to make a really good decision, especially since Alternative 2 says that we can approve portions of each of the submitted resolutions, I'd like to have more time to look over the organization charts and other information that I just received. So I'd like to ask to have this item continued until the next meeting.
That's fine, by the way.
Is it time sensitive?
Is this a time sensitive issue?
That certainly are. I think from Mr. Elliott's shop, as we move forward with the ERP, that, I think, will have an impact on how we move forward and the pace at which we move forward, understanding that there is a lag between the council's consideration and/or approval of this, and ultimately the processes that would ultimately result where folks could apply for jobs, that would then be placed in those jobs. Everything just slides back, and because we don't have a full council until the 27th of January, we lose close to a month and a half, as well as then having to go to Civil Service Commission. So there's elongation there.
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
I've been through many of these staff adjustments over the last eighteen years. Always, it's been staff decisions on reorganization and how to make it operate more efficiently. I've never heard of council vetoing moves by the city manager on his staff or that of the executive. So, but I didn't get the charts till late this afternoon. I read the report, and I'm comfortable with what staff is doing. We knew when we cut 500 employees out, we were going to have to make adjustments on who did what and make the city operate more efficiently. That's going to continue. So I'm okay.
I'll tell you, I'm comfortable with what staff has recommended. Out of deference for Ms. Devine, I'd like to continue, but if this is a time sensitive issue, perhaps Councilmember Devine can just abstain from the vote?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move 8, F1 and 2. Second?
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers, Devine?
No.
Friedman? Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Harrison Onion?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is AG, Director of Finance, regarding comprehensive annual financial report CAFR for June 30th, 2014. AG1 is motion accepting the CAFR report.
A brief report?
Yes.
An abbreviated, yet detailed overview of our award, soon-to-be award-winning CAFR, comprehensive annual financial review. Mr. Elliott will give you the detail on that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's that time of year that we officially bring the comprehensive annual financial report to city council for note and file. And what I want to do is, as we always do, is talk a little about the evolution of the CAFR and how it's structured and the timeline involved with how we go about the annual audit, in that it's generally a six-month timeline. We'll talk a little bit about the deliverables in terms of the audit opinion that we get and the single audit report, which we have to have for our federal grants. Vavernik Trinede is our new outside auditors this year. We went through, if you recall, a process, a rather arduous process of RFPing and selecting new auditors, and Vavernik Trinede, who had done, previous to McGlady, had done the audits in the past. So typically, when you have new auditors in, it's a little bit more difficult first year, but seeing that they had been here before and kind of knew the lay of the land, it was, is probably the most efficient first-year audit that I've gone through in my 25-year career. Just, because this always comes up throughout the year, why does it take so long when the year is over in June? Why does it take so long to get this report out, being that it's December? And just briefly go through the timeline of what we do in finance and how we work hand-in-hand with the auditors. They come out on site for their preliminary work in mid-late June and stay for a couple of weeks, doing a lot of testing, looking at the internal controls and policies that we have in place in the city. They test those, they do their risk assessments, and document everything that we do. They send out confirmations. Those are letters that they send out to all, anybody that we do business with, we have bonds with, so on and so forth, that they have outside third-party confirmation that we owe money, or we have a legitimate receivable, so on and so forth. My staff works very hard through the end of the summer into September, doing all the accruals that we have for bills that come in throughout that period of time, and revenues that come in after June 30th that we accrue back and count towards that last year. We put all the statements together as we work through the audit and go through all the different checklists that we have throughout October and into November. Keep in mind that each fund that we have, and we have over 60 funds, obviously, we talk primarily about the general fund and the larger enterprise funds like GWP, electric and water, but each one of those funds is a separate set of books that we have to keep track of and where all the checks and all the expenses go, so on and so forth. So we work through all those issues, back and forth with the auditors. They come out, they do their reviews, we get them draft copies of the CAFR, they review them, then they have outside concurring partner reviews, so on and so forth, to the point where we get the actual opinion, and that is the report that is included within the CAFR that basically says how we did during the year. And we always look for that unqualified or unmodified opinion, which we did receive this year. And then we bring it to council in December for submittal. Something to note is, this will be, in previous, we've had the GFPA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, award for financial reporting. The city's received that 19 years straight, and I do believe we meet all the qualifications to do that again. So a little, by way of structure of the CAFR, it's kind of a top-down report. It has a transmittal letter, which is kind of an introductory section, has all the officials, it has the organization of how the city is structured, all the departments. It jumps into the financial section, which is, has the management's discussion and analysis, for lack of a better description, and it's kind of an executive summary of what happened within the city, financial highlights, it has the debt ratings that we have, and then it jumps into the government-wide. If you've been around in the business long enough, the government-wide came about about 15 years ago with GASB 34. It was a major restructuring in how government produces their financial statements. The government-wide is what you'd probably call a consolidated financial in the private sector. It glues all the business-type activities together and all the governmental activities together, and gives you one large look at how the city operates. It then kind of downshifts to the fund level, where we show the actual activity of the funds, and it breaks those down even further into major and non-major funds. The general fund is, by definition, always has to be a major fund, and some of the other larger operations like electric, water, and sewer are also major funds. It gives you actual detail of all the operations for both income expense and then the relative balance sheets. Towards the back of the statement, it gets into all the non-major funds. Those are smaller special revenue funds, for example. And then we have the internal service funds. Those are ones that we set up for insurance or information services that centralize costs and then charge back to the user departments, the city being its only customer. It operates similar to the enterprise, but it does not operate external to the city. Beyond that, we have 21 schedules in the statistical section that has, typically has 10 years of information in the back of the CAFR, from anything from number of water customers to assessed valuations, so on and so forth. So to jump back to the government-wide statements, this is the top-down overall look of the entire city of, between both the government and business sections, and this is the balance sheet. At the end of last fiscal year, we ended the year with 1.6 billion in net assets or net position. So basically, taking the 2.2 billion in assets and subtracting out the various liabilities gets us to those amounts. Likely, the same side is the statement of activities, basically the income statement on the government-wide throughout the year, what the total amounts are throughout the all government activities in terms of expense. It's always done backwards, which is an interesting thing. They have the expenses first, broken out between governmental and business activities in total, and then all the revenues. So we had 562 million in expenditures against 582 million in revenues for a net difference or increase in $20 million, and which gets us down to the net assets of $1.6 billion. I mentioned the statistical sections. We have all the 21 different schedules. They're basically in five different categories, between financial trends, our revenue capacity that has a lot of information, debt capacity, demographic and economic information, and then operation information, number of water meters, miles of road, so on and so forth. The results of the audit, as I mentioned earlier, we get the independent auditor's report. The cleanest opinion, the highest level you can get, is an unmodified opinion, which we did receive this year. Second deliverable is the single audit report. That's the smaller report that the auditors prepare for, so that basically gives us our compliance for all the federal grant information we get. We roughly, I think, received about 50 million in federal grants this year. And we have to comply with the OMB, or Office of Management and Budget Circular A133, which are the guidelines of which we have to operate under for all the federal grants. They give us an opinion on that and how we do on compliance. We had one minor finding on not including some CFDA numbers on our documentation, so we've met, discussed that, and we will take corrective action to make sure that doesn't happen in the future. One other item of note is, as we work forward, and we've discussed OPEB at length, also the pension liability in the new GASB 68 of one, we have to start booking our pension liability. And if anybody's curious, it's on page 103 in the CAFR that gives detailed information on what our PERS liability is. Currently, it's $411 million. Currently, it's $411 million. Taken, we have $1.5 billion in pension liability against $1.1 billion in assets. And that's just the new guidelines of what we have to follow in terms of reporting. With that, I'd like to introduce David Showalter. He's the partner from Vavernick Trynday. To have him come up and address you as a council and any questions you may have of him at this point. Oh, and I would be remiss, I apologize, I would be remiss without thanking my staff who put in eight gazillion hours this year, Lilly, SuJin, Art, and I think I saw Zinda sitting way in the back. They worked a number of weekends this year putting this together. We had a couple of hiccups along the way in terms of our system, but got everything done on time and went well. David.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is David Showalter with Vavernick Trynday, and I am the partner in charge of the audit for the city of Glendale. This is our first year conducting the audit for fiscal year 2014. As was mentioned, we were selected this year to conduct the audit. VTD has previously conducted the audit for the city several years ago. Going into this audit, it was definitely one that we looked at, that we had a lot of experience working with the city in the past, and that experience certainly helped us with conducting the audit in a very efficient manner and getting the audit completed within the timelines that the city has requested. As mentioned earlier, the opinion, audit opinion, which is on page one of the financial statements, which you have in front of you, does indicate that the, that was an unmodified opinion this year that we provided. That's through a lot of hard work and effort in order to conduct the audit, which did start in July, and then we just completed the audit literally about two weeks ago. So a lot of effort, a lot of hours go into that, a lot of hard work with the city staff helping us with the audit, and I do want to mention to you that as far as how the audit went this year, it went very smoothly, that we did not have any difficulties with management or conducting the audit. All of the financial statement disclosures that you see in the financials are consistent with the prior year. As Bob mentioned, next year, you'll have to address the implementation of GASB 68, which is your implementing the net pension liability accounting, which is going to have a pretty significant effect on the presentation of your financial statements starting next year. And when we do meet with you next year, we'll be able to go through that and address that with you, so you fully understand how that, how that did impact your financial statements. So if you have any questions, I can certainly answer those for you.
We have no questions.
Okay. Again, thank you again for the opportunity to present to you, and thanks to the finance department, Lilly and SuJin and Bob for all their help with the audit. You have a great team, and we are looking forward to continue working with them in the future. So thank you.
Thanks for staying so late.
Okay.
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
Of move AG 1 and 2.
Second.
May we have the oral call, please?
Council members, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman?
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Harrison Anian?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Next item at 8H is city manager regarding productivity index and gain share incentive. 8H1's resolution appropriating $1,267,975.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir. Once again, Glendale is at the forefront of compensation and pension reform. To the extent here, I am very pleased and proud to submit this resolution before you in recognition of the hard work of the men and women of the city of Glendale. As you know, in at least the last two MOUs that were approved by the council, we negotiated a gain share program whereby if the departments were hitting more than a stated amount of their stated number or percentage of their strategic goals, if our key performance indicators were trending in the right direction, if we had a non-salary savings budget surplus, then the city council could award up to 1% of base salary for full-time employees, and what was derived for hourly employees who worked at least 500 hours was a flat $200 payment to them. This is a recognition that in addition to good financial management, that we are able to save money, and again, not just by not filling positions, but through revenue growth and operational savings, and that we're not just lighting the lights, that you actually have good work being done, as evidenced by the departmental strategic goals adopted by the city council as part of the budget, and so we have a high-level strategic achievement and then a lower-level tactical-level achievement, as evidenced by the key performance indicators, that we could then move forward with this gain share. What makes it so innovative is that it is based entirely on the city's ability to pay vis-à-vis a surplus that's generated and qualified, I have to again emphasize, not just salary savings, a surplus above and beyond salary savings. So it's based on city's ability to pay, it's non-PERZ-able, and it's at the council's discretion. This is something that is very unique and something that certainly, I think, our employees have earned, that you should be very proud of, and again, in terms of leading the way in the area of comp reform. So with that, I'll keep it brief, answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions? Okay. We have a speaker. Mr. Mike Mohill, three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mayor Anian, and council members. My name is Mike Mohill. Does anybody know in this room that there's a recession going on? Some people call it a depression. You know, if you're a city employee and you're working, making lots of money, and you have council members protecting your pensions, you are experiencing a recession. But if you're one of the millions of people throughout the country who is unemployed, it's called a depression. There are thousands of people in this city who are not working. They would be glad to work for the city of Glendale. We had 3,200 people apply for a firefighter's job here last year, because the job paid $68,000. Why are we giving bonuses to people for doing their job? That's what they're doing. That's the incentive. Please do your job, and we'll give you a bonus. Please do your job, and you can keep your job. Why don't we put everybody on a commission? You know, when I was, I was in sales for nearly 30 years. If I didn't work, I didn't eat. If you're on a salary guaranteed with all the benefits of a government job, why are we giving bonuses to people who are doing their job? Why don't we give them a pat in the back? That's what you get in the private industry, to give you a pat in the back, and they say, "You know what? You got a job." We went ahead and gave everybody a few months ago a golden parachute for leaving the city early. Remember those attaboys? And here we want to go have gift, it's only a little bit here, and by the way, we didn't have any money to help clean and beautiful people. Remember they're here a few minutes with hand in hand? We're taking care of our city employees. Who's taking care of the public? Who doesn't have, you people do not represent us when you give these bonuses to the city employees. Mr. Weaver has taken money from the unions, Mrs. Devine, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Freeman, you don't represent us, because you stand here, make sure they have their salaries and their pensions guaranteed every week. Ask the people who are handling with their hands out, asking for, "Please, give me a handout. This is Christmas. Give me a Christmas bonus. Give me a Christmas bonus." City employees should be thankful they got a job, and if they don't like working for the city of Glendale, there's the door. Go work for Burbank or Pasadena, see if they give you a better job. I'm sure any opening, you're going to have thousands of people lining up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Mr. Ochoa, why are we giving our employees a bonus?
Well, sir, it's kind of funny. I guess first and foremost, to the extent, good night, Mr. Mohill.
Happy New Year.
Okay. To the extent that, just a couple hours ago, we heard from Mr. Mohill say that the voting public is always right, and somehow, the voting public saw fit to put all of you up here, and you all, through the course of your administration of your offices, have not only been tremendous stewards of the public's trust and treasury, but you have been fiscal hawks. And I can tell you that as you look at all of the MOUs going back several years, with practically all of our entities, all of our bargaining groups, there are zeros in terms of what was negotiated to the employees, and in fact, in a number of cases, negatives by way of what the givebacks were from the employees to the city, to make sure that our budgets were indeed balanced. That's something that, there is a degree of solemn pride to all of our employees, because certainly, a 1% gain share, again, not a bonus just for showing up, but because the work actually gets done, something that is earned, most definitely. But to the extent that we have the employees that are doing the good work, that have, continue to do that good work, certainly, you can't say that, I would, I would say that's not good management, to say, "For six years' worth of no increases, here is a 1% gain share recognition, and for that, we expect you to be grateful to the obsequious levels that were highlighted by Mr. Mohill." I would say quite the opposite. This, at the end of the day, is a business. You are in the service business. As the board of directors of this corporation, you employ 1,500 employees who do outstanding work, and no, they do not work on commission. I don't know that we would ever operate any one of our departments that way, and that's the recognition of the business of government that we are in. And when you look at the record of achievement, when you look at the recognitions that this city gets, that this organization gets throughout the region, it's hard not to swell with pride for the work that these people are doing, and again, on a non-recurring, non-PERZ-able basis, this is a recognition of that good work, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. Yes. Isn't also, isn't it true that those individuals who are currently working for the city of Glendale, not only have they not had any increases in their pay, whatever it is, six years now? Going on since 2008? Since 2008. So, but they're also doing a lot more work, right? They have basically picked up the burden of doing the work of their coworkers that are no longer with the city, and that's some 500, 500 coworkers.
Yes, sir. If you look at our deliverables by way of those key performance indicators, which is why we give those to the public, publish them each quarter, so they can keep score at home, you see that the degree of work hasn't gone down. In fact, in some cases, it's actually increased, calls for service have increased. The work that is being done across all of our line departments has increased, it's being done with fewer people. You're absolutely right, sir.
Yes, Ms. Devine?
Well, I think at the beginning of the meeting, we heard Mr. Zern and Mr. Galanian talk about our, the crews that were out during the storm, and they were out all night and half the, half the day, and trying to keep our city intact. So I don't know how we can possibly question the amount of good work that our employees do, and as you say, they are kind of down in numbers. But I asked for some information from Assistant City Manager, Mrs. Beers, and she provided me with that information, and these are the facts that I came up with. This is an allocation of $1.2 million going to 1,500 employees. That comes, or averages out to about $800 an employee, give or take, some will get more, some will get less. Then I reviewed the salaries, the pensions, and the concessions from 2008 to 2014, and for all the bargaining groups. It clearly showed that the employee bargaining groups together, and I looked at all of those, and subtracting the concessions, and other than the contractually obligated adjustments, there have been either no cost of living adjustments, or there's been a net reduction in take-home pay for the past six years. When you continue the math, this $1.2 million averages to $133 a year for all of these employees, and I think that our employees are good enough that they deserve that, a pat on the back and a thank you.
Mr. Najarian?
Well, there's, and I agree with you entirely, Ms. Devine, but there is one group of employees to whom we did not extend the 1% bonus, and this group works hard, day in, day out, to late hours. Sometimes they have, hold two jobs, three jobs, and that group is the city council, and we have unanimously refused to accept the 1%, which would come out to about
30 cents?
$15 per year, if we do your math. But, but it's all for the residents and to keep, who takes care of the residents? I think that was a question. Who takes care of the residents? Our employees take care of the residents. When there's a water main break on Shirley Gene, as we just heard, with homes losing water, and when the electricity is out on Fairview, it's our employees that take care of our residents. We make the big decisions up here on the dais. Very few of us have the day-to-day interaction with the residents to solve their problems like our employees do, and I, with clear conscience, will approve this, this item.
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
You've all said a lot of the things I was going to say. I would have been willing to bet anything that Mr. Mohill would have been here tonight to attack us on this, and he is, and he has. Now, when you cut 500 workers out of 2,000, that's 25% of the workforce. That means the other 75% have to do more work, same amount of work to produce than the whole group did. So all employees are working harder, and as has been said, you don't represent us, and we're part of the us. Mr. Mohill, you know, blasted well up in our canyon, you have your garbage picked up every Thursday. We had our lights go out in the canyon last week, and they were back up within two hours. You could go on and on, looking at what the employees do for this city. If we, meaning you, the employees, were not doing their job, we would have people down here, residents down here, all the time complaining, "What's happening? Why aren't you taking care of us?" You know, you couldn't ask for a better workforce than we have in this city. And I'll be honest about it, I know the morale is low. No pay increase in six years? I mean, how places, how many places do you go and you don't find employees getting some kind of raise? You have to do something for the morale of the employees. If you can't afford to give them a raise, which we can't, putting a TOT on, tax on, try to raise a little money. But the revenue in this city is low compared to other cities, and without revenue, we can't, we can't give the services that we wish, so we got a lot of people doing a lot of hard work. And with the morale low, if you can't at least give a few dollars as a bonus at Christmas time, bah humbug. And Mr. Mohill, you can lump it if you don't like it, you live in, according to the real estate journals up in Glen Oaks Canyon, our properties all are between $900,000 and $1 million. And if you don't like it, Mr. Mohill, you can sell your million-dollar house and move to a city that accommodates you much better than Glendale does.
Here, here, Mr. Weaver, here, here.
But no applause, please.
You're hearing a similar attack on any, only one person in Glendale has the nerve to come up and say that to us about our employees. So long overdue, and while it's not much, I hope you get the message that the council does care about you and will always continue to care about you, and we'll see what the future holds.
So would you like to introduce?
Sure. I'd like to move H, 8H1.
Second.
May we have the oral call, please?
Council members, Devine?
Yes.
Friedman? Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Harrison Anian?
Yes.
Good night, employees. Thank you.
Okay, no, please, no applause.
Have a good evening.
Next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
Next item is oral communications, five-minute portion, discussion is limited to items, not part of this agenda. Speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision, and the city manager, mayor, for the matter, to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
Great. Thank you. Mike Mohill is the first speaker, followed by Sid McSudien.
Good evening, Mayor Anian, and council members. My name is Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Sinani and council members, my name is Mike Mohill. Councilman Laura Friedman, your colleague, our Najarian, before elected to council was on the Traffic and Parking Commission. Being appointed by his colleagues to the Metropolitan Transportation Authority was a natural selection. Your colleague, Mr. Najarian, has argued against term limits because he felt it required a seasoned council member to best serve on the quasi-government agencies. According to your bio, before elected to council, your background included being on the design review board, moving, producing, operating a web-based business, selling vintage jewelry and decorative art. What did your good friend and mentor, the three-time convicted felon, former mayor John Draymond, on the second week you were on council and office with zero experience nominate you to Metropolitan Water Board? Additionally, why did your friend, Mr. Najarian, who was strongly against term limits, like yourself, also approve your selection to the MWT when you were not even a seasoned council person? Using Mr. Najarian's reasoning, Councilman Weaver, an engineer and seasoned politician, would have been the best appointed person to the MWD in 2009. Mrs. Friedman, I do not care to know who and how other cities appointed members to their different boards and commissions. I live in the city of Glendale and why did John Draymond replace a seasoned water engineer, Peter Cavounas, with an individual with zero, zero legislative experience on water engineering experience to be on the influential Metropolitan Board? Councilwoman Friedman, you stated you spent almost as much time with the MWT issues as you did with city council business and you do not get compensated. How's your web-based doing, Mrs. Freeman? And have you been to any swap meets lately to sell your vintage art? Oh, I forgot, since you've been on council, from what I understand, your husband, a landscape architect, business has skyrocketed because of all the connections you have made through the years with different developers, contractors, architects, et cetera. While running for reelection in 2013, you state the state mandated, we have more housing. However, excuse me, this is only true if you take state grant money. The cities of La Canada, Flintridge, San Marino, Malibu and Calabasas do not take grant money from the state or federal government. Grant money has strings attached like requiring low-income housing and higher housing density. The 2006 Downtown Pacific Plan DSP was to span about 20 years. Since 2009, when you were elected to office, you have approved approximately 3,000-plus apartments or condos. Just at the corner of Central and the 134 freeway, you approved approximately 1,000 units, creating a greater nightmare than we have today. No regard to traffic circulation, infrastructure or the life of our own city landfill was considered when you approved these mega complexes. Councilwoman Friedman, I found it hypocritical that you do not practice what you preach. On one breath, you encouraged developers to come to Glendale and build within the DSP. But just last week, at another special afternoon meeting of the city council, when the public was at work, you and Councilman Weaver, who was running for, again, for next year for reelection, approved outside the DSP, a high-density apartment complex with 180 units and low-income housing and higher housing density at Broadway and Pacific. However, on the same day at night, you just approved the Bob's Big Boy Mega Apartment Complex, also located outside the DSP on West Glen Oaks Boulevard. Did you and Councilman Weaver approve the Broadway and Pacific project because the impacted residents rarely vote or donate to council members' campaign? And most of all, they are not well organized like the residents in North Glendale who have a high voter turnout and are ready to fight back? Thus, a need for council districts, a go-to person to represent the needs of southwest Glendale. Councilwoman Laura Freeman, the developers and public employees' best friend, wants to be elected to the 43rd Assembly District. Welcome to Politics 101. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Next person is Sid McSudian, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, my name is Sid McSudian. I just want to present to you a narrative tonight, just for you to get involved in what I've observed the past seven months, working with Mr. Hagani and Avilia and Eric. It's regarding the Iranian Armenian Society Building, which is the 117 Louise, which all of you know, or at least you're aware of, that that particular building was built with a conditional use permit and apparently, I just found out recently, that it was a covenant for it. Covenant, as all you know, especially lawyers and people who do contracts, bond, promise and basically it's agreement. What has transpired over there was there was, first of all, why there was a covenant, which I haven't pulled any paperwork yet on it, but I brought to the awareness of Mr. Hagani and I wanted to be amicable because I have no axe to grind with the society nor with the city, but there is a tangible issue here. Where there's a promise in that covenant, that the Iranian Armenian Society, once they take the possession of occupancy, there must not rent out any office space for profit of any sort. That's what the covenant says. Now, from the first day, the Board of Directors and very prominent individuals, they broke that covenant. They rented out all their offices, approximately seven of them, they duped people into coming in, like attorney's office, architect's, social office, catering office and so on. And they continued to do so until about months ago, where an individual came to the city and asked for a permit, I'm assuming business permit of occupancy, where the department says you cannot have one because they're not supposed to rent out. Well, technically, they should raise a red flag to the department to say, if we worked so hard after allocating almost totality from the beginning inception of this project, $11 million, which was $6 million cash for their old building, almost 16,000 square foot of free land that was given to them to erect the building, three years of free rent of their, and on and on, which is whatever that the council thought, it's not my business at all. It is what it is. But having said all that, at least where this honorable city has done so much for the community, at least one covenant in there, what it says, once you occupy it, do not abuse it. They've abused it and they've abused it until they got caught. When I told Mr. Hagani, because I've also asked some questions and he says, this is disturbing, so he called them in. Finally, through their attorneys and so on, they had a meeting, they admitted to everything. Yes, we did. But the issue is this now, and this is on the record, of course, you can ask Mr. Hagani, Avilia and so on, I'm not making up the story. But yet, when today I asked Mr. Hagani, or, because he didn't have time and I understand, he's a busy individual and they've been very amicable, all of them, I'm not complaining against the staff, it's just that the position that they've been put in because of this revelation. But the covenant is this, when you get caught, there must be consequences, otherwise you wouldn't have put in a covenant in there. And if someone exercises by abusing the laws of the Glendale Department of Planning, which after all that donation and flexibility allows this society to function and not to keep their promise to the city that helped them to have this particular building there and to nourish their society, on the contrary, they abuse it. And when I asked Mr. Hagani, what, he says, what do you want me to do? Punish them? I said, I don't know what you've got to do, but there's got to be something done to make an example that if you abused since, from this year to this year, and it's apparently it's for five years, after five years, all this disappears. Now they're telling me that yes, we told them, they admitted, now they're coming back, we gave them time to come back with their attorneys to re-modify the covenant. Well, you cannot do that. First, you admit you did wrong, you profited, you keep advertising that you're a nonprofit organization, which you're not, they're applying for a number and if you take the numbers of seven offices at the tune of minimum at 75 to almost 150,000 a year income, that's a huge amount of money. But there's got to be consequences, there's got to be a way to show to the rest of them, you cannot do this under the watchful eyes of the good people of the city of Glendale. You're welcome.
First off, the bulky item pickup. There are still items that have been kicking around in my neighborhood for two weeks, laying out on the right-of-way and they're not being picked up. Again, I go back to, I don't understand why the truck drivers of the regular trash trucks can't call them in, they're on their phones all the time, I don't know whether they're personal calls or not. Why can't they call it in that those items have been there for at least two weeks? The other thing is, of course, we have some wonderful jewels in our city, one of them being, of course, the Verdugo Adobe up on Dorothy, where they had the luminaries last week. Even with the rain, they managed to put them out in paper bags and there were quite a good attendance while I was there Friday night pouring tea and so, and it was a worthwhile endeavor for those ladies. Again, volunteers, they're not paid anything and they're there all hours at night. And then, the doctor's house, we had, was open on Saturday night at 6:30 till 8:30 and it was lit up with the candlelight and the gazebo and so forth. And we provided free punch and hot chocolate cookies, homemade cookies, all that, and music from a conservancy group, children playing the violin, one of them like maybe this big, she'd been coming up there since she was five years old. Okay, and so it's going to be open again this Saturday for anybody that would like to come. Hopefully, it won't rain, if it does, I won't be there, but anyway, you're welcome to come, they have tours. Okay, the other thing is, all this talk about benefits, I mean, employees getting raises, if you, if the employees, if you were paid, if you paid the volunteers from the Glendale Clean and Beautiful, you owe them thousands and thousands of dollars. Some of them are very well educated, very well trained, whatnot, you'd owe them thousands of dollars for the work they have done over the, what, 50 years, did they say? Just even in the last few years, I've seen many of them come, go out of their way even when they're ill, to turn up and do their job and do whatever. So, you know, hey, there's money that the city would have had to put out. You know, the other thing that you go on about is the business of the employees not getting raises. What other employees, private companies, get three months of vacation, get, take off? Fridays, every other Friday, sick days, Christmas, vacation, the holidays. I counted it up, it's three months, almost three months that they're off. They still get off that every other Friday and so therefore, yeah, sure, they got to make up their time, but when? Did they put in extra hours? I'd like to know about that one. You know, it was brought up before and nobody ever did anything about it. I've talked about it before and nothing was ever done about that particular situation. So maybe if they worked the hours that they were paid to work, instead of being off every other Friday, then there wouldn't be such a burden on the rest, on them overall. And the other thing is thinking about not having the Clean and Beautiful Group, there'll be no more awards given out for Christmas decorations, Halloween decorations, which they did and they go, they went around and looked at the homes and passed out the awards. And maybe we'll see a lot more graffiti around the city and how about the smoking violations? We all, all of us on that committee, were aware and worked for the city all the time. Where we saw violations, we reported it and the trash that was left around and so forth from cigarette smoking. So anyway, by dissolving them, I think, you think you've done yourselves a favor? No, because they raised their own money to do their projects. We had a fundraiser, Julie Sherman, and we raised a lot of money and there is money there. And as I said, we paid the, our part-time employee who worked for the city of Glendale while we paid him and also we paid their fundraiser. So I'm just saying, you know, overall, it's not a fair deal at all for you to give them the slap in the face the way that was done. People like me, were not even recognized by the city that we had done all the work we did over those years. Not, we didn't get any award, we didn't get anything, just not even a goodbye, good job done or anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond. I just want to, yeah, just a correction, I think we all want to comment on that, there was no dissolution of anything, right? There was just a dissociation or decoupling.
That bond is dissolved, they are dissolved as a city commission. They still exist, they will still meet, they will still put on events, they will still be supported by the city, they are the affiliate for the America Beautiful. As a quasi-city commission, that part is what's dissolved.
Do we appropriate some funds for them, in fact?
You are, yes, for the MOU for them, you are not casting them adrift by any stretch.
And we also gave them the name, we said that they could use, be part of the city. But I also wanted to say to Margaret, and it seems like I'm defending the city employees, but since I have taken on this position, I've been down at city hall a lot on Fridays and a lot of people don't work on Fridays and yet they are here. And I say, aren't you, isn't this one of your days off? And, well, yeah, but I'm doing some work and they're here for hours. So it's not that they, they don't, you know, come in or they're not here, they are here and they're here when they don't have to be. And I was really impressed with that and I still am. I just wanted to let Margaret know and the public know as well, that they may have a Friday off, but believe me, a lot of them are here and they're here until 10 o'clock, 9 o'clock at night, doing things all over the city, so.
It's probably worth noting, ma'am, I appreciate that certainly. The 980 schedule is generally what we have here, so it's, it's the nine-hour days and then an eight-hour day on Friday.
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, just a correction, Margaret, we did not give any pay raises tonight. It was a game.
Game share.
Yeah, that's how we game. As for 980 work schedule, I've worked on a 410 schedule. All my career's been in civil service, the city of Los Angeles, the federal government, now here. And we get certain benefits, vacation time, sick time, health benefits, it's a perk in working for civil service systems. When I came out of college, I had a choice, go into the private sector or go into civil service. I wanted a guarantee of a job with health benefits, vacation, I didn't want to be at the whims of the public, private, the private sector that could fire me at a moment's notice and not give me any benefits. I've known plenty of people like that. And as far as the smoking, well, the different ladies from organizations that called me and I started the ball rolling on the smoking ordinance, I'm the guy that got over 400 hit mails for doing that. So I take exception that you created the hills, the smoking ordinance. I did and respect to the people that came to me, I started it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, and we have the last speaker, Richard Leibov. Thanks for your patience, Mr. Leibov.
Good evening, Mayor Sinan, other council members and city staff and the Channel 6 viewing audience, if you're still there. I am Richard Leibov, a 35-year resident of Glendale. Like many other Glendaleans, I am appalled that Glendale will not have a float in this year's Tournament of Roses Parade, after having won for over 100 years. In fact, in today's website for the Tournament of Roses Parade that I went to earlier today, there is a picture of Glendale's 1928 float. In addition, it should be noted that Glendale won the first sweepstakes float prize which was awarded in 1924. was awarded in 1924. Knowing that not having a float was a possibility, I wrote a letter to the Glendale News Press Mailbag that was published June 28th, 29th, 2014. Please allow me to read what I wrote. I read with, excuse me, I read with interest Brittany Levine's article in the June 21st, 22nd Weekend Edition of the News Press. My immediate reaction was that instead of trying to create a nonprofit arm of the city to raise funds, there needs to be a reexamination of the city's urban art program. Under the current resolution, 2% of the, of the proposed building valuation of a project or development is utilized directly by the developer, or 1% in lieu fee is paid into the Glendale Urban Art Fund. The city needs to consider revising this resolution and both raise the percentage and allow for a portion of the in lieu fee to go toward raising an endowment that would provide sufficient funds from the return on investment to fund the float each year. The notion that nonprofit, that a nonprofit would have this capacity is unrealistic and has previously been explored by Councilwoman Dave Weaver and his allies to no avail. In recent years, it has been unfortunate that community donors, including Rick Russo, Glendale Adventist Hospital, and residents like myself, have made contributions to keep the float going down Colorado Boulevard each year. Surely, the float could qualify as, as art under a revised resolution. No one would deny that the city of Glendale receives positive outreach and publicity from participating in the parade. City manager Scott Ochoa needs to convene an annah, an hot committee immediately to get this moving. With less than six months before the float needs to be completed, the city may need to front the funds for 2015 float, and after that, private funds could be used, and we would abound in the funds from development purposes. I regret I didn't come to you after I submitted that article to the Glendale News Press, because I think something obviously should have been done. Naturally, it's very disappointing that Mr. Ochoa and others seemingly did nothing to correct the situation. Since then, I've done some additional research on this matter and found that as of November 19th, 2014, the current total value of the Urban Art Fund is, get ready for this, $2,645,132.49. Surely, the ordinance creating this fund could have been tweaked to allow funding for the float. This, as much as anything else, is a form of art and brings positive attention to our jewel city. The city of Hope, for example, is among many who use the New Year's Day Prose Parade to tell their story. We in Glendale need to tell our story if we want to bring more businesses and revenue to Glendale. I would hope that my presence here this evening will prompt attention to this issue. I will also be at the Arts and Cultural Commission this Thursday afternoon to direct their attention to this, and hopefully, they will include the float as one of the recommendations. My sense from previous council meetings is that Mr. Ochoa does not respect my recommendations. I wish, however, to go on record, that I think that his time could be better spent dealing with, with issues such as the above. In the current issue of the online Glendale connections, he ta, he talks about his most favorite 15 Christmas movies and nothing about the state of the city. It is my belief that we don't pay him to do that. I, it was unfortunate, I wasn't here earlier this evening when Mr. Zern spoke, because I do live in the Brockmont Park Historic District, and I thank him very much for the effort that G W P exerted the other day when we had an outage there of over six hours. While on this state of the city, I also need to publicly mention that it is no longer possible to contact members of city commissions directly through the city's website. This was changed a number of months ago and is certainly not in keeping with the need for transparency in city government. I hope that the council will look into this and that change this back to direct contact and not through the city liaison for each of the commissions. I thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Leibov. All right, that's the last item on the agenda. Mr. Clerk?
Your business.
May I remark that Mr. Ochoa said the approximate time of dismissal tonight would be 10 P M.
But he was kidding. He said that he was joking.
Within one minute.
Blind squirrel.
All right, should have taken some bets on that. When will you adjourn?
We adjourned at 990, no, 959 P M. There you go.